America and the Super Republic for which it stands, one nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Venus?
Present.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rado? Uh, Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Rado? Ten of eleven.
A well-public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the Luzerne County zoning map to rezone one parcel of property totaling zero point eight two seven acres in Houston Borough from LI Light Industrial to District Zone to R2, two-family residence district zone. A public comment? A public comment? Anybody on the Zoom?
Motion for adjournment.
Is there a motion? Hold on, hold on, hold on. All right.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. McGinley. Second by Mr. Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's call the next one to order. Yep, yep, yep. All right. We'll call the next one to order. Uh, we already did Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Roll call. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Venus?
Present.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rado? Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here. All right. Well, a public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2023 fiscal year budget for the Luzerne County opioid. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes. Mr. Fitzgerald, Nanticoke.
Anybody can turn your mics on, by the way.
Okay, I'll talk, I'll talk about them until you get home. Basically, an opioid epidemic.
I know that there's a lot of funds out there, and I know that the DEA, Sam Golducci is going to get a lot of that funds to help the opioid epidemic. Being a bail bondsman, being an ex-convict, and being an ex-addict, I think we have to put as much money as we can to the DEA and give them the resources they need because we don't have a safe environment. And not only that, it's starting to hurt our kids. We're having a lot of fentanyl deaths. And as far as anything that we can do to get money into the hands of the DEA to stop the drugs from coming here is the first step. Once we stop or we try to slow down as much because we'll never stop it, then we could look at other resources as far as, you know, incarceration. I know that we had some issues lately in, in the jail, but I also think the jail should be have the resources. Right now, they're understaffed. We need to make sure that we pay the guards more money because right now that is one of the most stressful jobs in, in our, in our county. Being an ex-convict, it's not easy. We're, we, we test them every day. We're con men. We can manipulate them, and they don't have an easy job. And we can't put one guard per one inmate. It's feasibly impossible. So what's happened lately, but I have to commend the prison. I heard that they've already taken steps to help inmates that have addictions or contemplating suicide. They've already started where they're going to have two intakes, one for male and one for female, and they're going to have a medical treatment starting right away. So hopefully, this is the first time that I have seen in Luzerne County prison, in the last 10 years I've associated with them, that they're proactive. Even though that this happened, they could not, just like we couldn't predict COVID or we can't predict anything. But right away, within a week or two, they're already taking reactive measures to be proactive in the future so we don't have deaths, so we can attack this drug opioid problem. And I really got to commend Deputy, uh, the Director Robcha and the staff over there. They're doing commendable job with limited people and limited resources. And also the DA, they have seven people that they have to get job openings. So we need to get them filled. We got to pay them what they're worth because the county's worth it, our kids are worth it. So please, I know you guys got a lot of budget. I know you have a big task, but please take that under consideration that listen to, I know we're going to be looking for another warden, um, and we need, we, we really need a good one. And, uh, I hope that you guys have taken the time to interview, talk to the guards, talk to the captains. I'll finish in two seconds. And basically, I hope you do your due diligence, and then this way moving forward, we work as a team in Luzerne County. I thought about this drug opioid.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Knapp?
Ron Knapp from Nanticoke. I was reading the paper that Luzerne County has joined the law enforcement treatment initiative, a program designed for substance abuse users to avoid arrest and seeking treatment. Anything we can do to, um, to suppress this epidemic is very essential. Um, this, this hits my, my heart. It's close to my heart. I lost a brother to, uh, drug and alcohol abuse at the age of 45. Any way that we can suppress this epidemic is absolutely necessary. Uh, it's worth our while for our children, our youth, and the community as a whole. Any way to combat against the metric tons that are coming across the southern border. And my opinion is we got to seal up the border, but that's on a federal end. But, um, near and dear to my heart, I lost a brother to this. Uh, we get a chance for public comments during the voting session, correct? I'm going to also further my information, um, I'm going to share later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Anybody else for public comment? Opioid grant?
Here.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
Counsel, fellow citizens, Gregory Griffin, Swarfield. Monday, the district attorney had all his law enforcement personnel under the dome here, and, uh, it was about new drug treatment initiatives. And, uh, he commented that he wants more drug houses raided. Now, I think it was about five years ago. Counsel Strategic Initiative Committee made it a priority to address the opioid epidemic. That was about five years ago. It's in the agenda. You could check it out. Since then, Counsel's Strategic Initiative Committee has done nothing. They know we've had council members leave, and we have new Strategic Initiative Committee, but, uh, I've been arguing and advocating for more action from counsel concerning the opioid epidemic, where in 2021, we lost 208 young people. And we don't have 22 numbers out, 2022 yet. The coroner's guarding those numbers, but I think they're going to be worse than 208. Counsel Strategic Initiative Committee should do what they said they were going to do and make the opioid epidemic a priority on their Strategic Initiative Committee. So we want some initiative in that regard because we're losing 208 young people a year in Luzerne County, and pretty soon it's not, not going to be, nothing going to be like, uh, left, like, except old people like me. So when you lose your vitality of the citizens, the young people, uh, the community dries up. So you guys got to, you got to figure out what you're going to do. I mean, uh, the DA told me he has trouble accessing the opioid settlement money because he wants to go into the schools to alert the kids to fentanyl. So, uh, I see no leadership from council regarding the opioid epidemic. So I don't know. We have Strategic Initiative Committee. Uh, I know the last one made it a priority, so it's very disappointing. Of course, the, the DA took some action. He had all his troops there, and he wants to raid the drug houses and also do more drug treatment. But unless council takes a leadership role in this, we're going to lose a lot more young people in Luzerne County, and it's going to happen on your watch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Anybody else for public comment? Go ahead.
Elizabeth Hartman, Hanover Township. Um, I lost a brother-in-law, um, 27 years ago to, um, an overdose. Um, addiction runs in my family. It's in the genetics. So I don't drink. I don't, never touched a drug, never anything, because I knew that I was predisposed to that. That's why I'm here tonight to fight for, um, you know, that we need to get more involved because all of their children are all predisposed because it's genetic. I don't know the answer because right now where we are is I have sick family members that I'm taking care of, and I can't get a doctor to write a, a prescription for a pain med for somebody that's suffering in pain because they're afraid that you're going to take that and you're going to give it and sell it on the street. So like my brother example, tomorrow I have to take him and sign him up for palliative care so that I can get him a pain med because a doctor refuses to write a prescription for him for pain. He's dying. So I don't know the answer. I just know that we need more people at the table, more people talking, more people listening, um, and working together because the, the young people, like with COVID and everybody's on their phones, there's no face-to-face. We all, when we grew up, we all were outside playing. We were outside sleigh riding. We were outside in the park. We came home and the streetlights came on. If I came home and my dad was smoking a cigarette on the front porch, I knew I was in trouble. You know what I mean? Like, and with the computers, my mother promised me when she died she was going to kill the person in heaven that invented the computer. Now, her body's still up in science, so she hasn't got to heaven yet because they've had her for, for a year. But when she gets there, I guarantee you, as she stood here at this podium, she will kill that person, and maybe all computers will go down and we'll be back to face-to-face. So I'd appreciate it if you guys really take an initiative and get behind the DA. I wish more people knew about what the DA was going to announce before he announced it. And I do know that over at the jail, when they come in, inmates are watching the people that are withdrawing. They can have something for diarrhea at the present time, and they can have an aspirin. That's all they can have. So that's why they're committing suicide and dying in the jail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Anybody on the Zoom?
No.
Second. Motion by Mr. McGinley. Second by Mr. Venus. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is adjourned. Call the final public hearing to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus?
Present.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rado? Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Ten of eleven.
Thank you. My public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2023 fiscal year budget for the Luzerne County election integrity grant. Anybody for public comment for the election integrity grant? Mr. Knapp?
Ron Knapp from Nanticoke. This is such a serious subject. We got to throw money at it, but I can also tell you this. In all my experience with door knocking, everybody is mad as hell over 375 doors, according to a walking list. The heads didn't roll. They're asking, why wasn't something done? I understand that the district attorney is still investigating this, but look, in, in America, the United States spent, please bear with me.
Mr. Knapp, could you try to stick to the election integrity grant? This, this is about the grant. This isn't about the Bureau of Elections itself.
And, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm talking about money that was invested by us to Iraq to liberate it. Yes, we should do this. We should throw money at a circumstance where, where in, in the war too, that I was, uh, participating in voting, I had to explain to the judge of election, you got to turn the machine, it's supposed to be a private experience. Yes, we do need to put money towards the integrity of our election process, but, but it really, really doesn't help the matter if people, people are not seeing action through, with, with the obnoxious flaws that took place. That's what I'm trying to explain to you. This is irrelevant. You could throw as much money as you want at it, but if, the fact of the matter is, if people don't see, uh, people, uh, and consequences from their actions, uh, but you, you could throw all the money that you, you want at it. It, it's, if, if there's, somebody has made an example of the circumstance, that's just, that's what I'm hearing at the doors. That, that's just what I'm trying to explain here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Anybody else for public comment on the election integrity grant? Anybody on the Zoom?
No hands. Oh, wait.
Uh, Mr. Smith on the Zoom? Pat Smith?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Pat Smith from Hanover Township.
Okay.
Hanover Township. This should be a no-brainer. If you can put more money into the election, Bureau of Election, do it. I mean, vote for it. It's, it's a lot of money coming from the state, so I would urge you to vote yes. Okay?
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else for public comment?
Just one, one quick comment.
Go ahead.
I think everybody in this room knows that this county council would love nothing more to increase, that increase the integrity of the election process every time. And people know me personally, I've tried several times to do things, uh, which fail. But it needs to be said again that county council members right here in this room, we have no authority or power, it's outside our purview, to make changes to anything or to enforce, uh, anything about the election process, uh, the election machines, anything out in the precincts, districts. We cannot interfere. That's the word that's commonly used. When we try to do anything like that, we are interfering, and it's outside our authority. So all of those things needed to improve the election process or add to its integrity fall on either or both the Bureau of Elections and the election board. So it's not the fault of council members when things fail on election day. We have hired employees and staff and managers and division heads that run that process. Council cannot interfere with that. I just wanted to make sure everybody can know that. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking. I, I had my, I came in a little late. I'm, I apologize.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to the election integrity grant, I would just like to remind, uh, council, the, the management and the public that, uh, as Councilman Thornton just said, and I would piggyback off of what he said, in terms of the constitution of the State of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, under Article Seven, which is the elections article, says clearly that the state has purview over any changes in the election process, not county council, not the municipalities, not the election board, unless the election board does within their, within that, within the confines of the process that's established under the Pennsylvania election law, Title 25. That is it. Otherwise, it is up to the state legislature, and the governor would sign that legislation if the process changes. That's how it works in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So, uh, as far as the election integrity grant that was passed by the legislature, the allocation was provided for by the state legislature, signed into law by Governor, by then Governor, uh, Tom Wolf, and that's where we are now. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Mr. Urban? Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I just reading online because I don't want to talk about something else. I know we're limited about the Integrity Act, but most things like the government, voter integrity doesn't always mean integrity, it means manipulation. I don't know what this money is going for. From what I just understood, it's for mail-in ballots, and it's money's geared to that. So if it is geared to that, shoot it down. Okay? Again, if it has anything to do with mail-in ballots or drop boxes, shoot it down. And here's why. Intimidation happens at the home. People get abused, women get abused, men get abused at the home. When two people are voting at a table, the reason why we have ballot things that you go with these little cubes like this, so no one can see our vote. Mail-in ballots, you could be at the table, and a man could say, vote this way, or I'm going to punch you in the face. Understood. That's voter intimidation. It happens all the time in America, and if we don't think it doesn't, don't. So if this money is to help the process and real integrity, but just because it says integrity, we all know that the government's full of crap. Every time when they say something, it's like the Clean Air Act, you know someone's putting money in their pocket or they're manipulating the system. I don't trust anything, what, what, what a legislature does. Lawyers love to bull crap. Okay? That's what lawyers do. Okay? So, that being said, if you could, find out what this money is going to and if it has to do with anything with mail-in ballots or drop boxes dropping, if it has to do with making sure that we don't have a fiasco like the last time, giddy up, as Craver would say.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
We're here to talk about the budget and not the election process. That's a different time and different place.
Right.
This public period is to talk about the budget, the money that we're going to get grant to the state, but we have to put it in our budget. That's all this. Turn it down if it is bad. Turn it down. So tell the state to stay. Let's get on with what we have to do.
All right. You're, you're out of order, Mr. Fitzgerald, please. Mr. Urban?
Just wanted to make one correction. A colleague next to me, but, uh, I just wanted to say council probably interfered in the process of integrity back in 2012 when we passed the admin code, uh, enlisting all, and then amended it later on in the future. Uh, council amended the admin code, laying out all the different various responsibilities of the bureau. And I think those responsibilities should have been laid out by the Board of Elections to the bureau, not county council. Uh, so they are actually physically law here in, in this county under our administrative code because administrative code was, was passed by ordinance, making it law. So the integrity starts with us, I think. You know, like I had mentioned, I'm still, actually still working on, uh, trying to adjust the admin code to, to actually give those specific responsibilities back to the rightful owners and not us. So, uh, that's pending very shortly. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is adjourned. Move right into the voting session. That's okay with everybody here? All right. It is 6:06 PM. I'd like to call this voting session to order. We already did roll call and pledge allegiance, I'm sorry, pledge allegiance and moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus?
Present.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Rado? Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Schem, would you like to announce our executive session we had prior to this?
Yes. Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session concerning, uh, the person that is supposed to be the new division head for corrections, uh, that's been posed by administration.
Thank you. A deletions from the voting session agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to delete number six right now of the confirmation process. I think, you know, it's just too short of amount of time. I didn't really get to speak to the candidate much, even though I was on the phone. And I don't feel that council had enough time in the back room with 11 of us to address all the questions and concerns of the entire process.
Sir, a second?
I'll second that.
Motion of a second? Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
This is a motion to do.
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
No.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
No.
Okay. Motion, motion fails. Any other deletions from the agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Still waiting. Second.
Motion by Mr. McDermott, second by Mr. Thornton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Agenda's adopted. Okay. There are motions to approve the minutes of February 14th voting session meeting. Oh, I apologize. I apologize. All right. There are not be public comment on the voting session agenda. I have a few slips up here. Uh, Mr. Mr. Maslow?
Hello, Chet Maslow, Dallas Borough. And, um, I hope I'm in order, I'm to talk about ARP.
That's going to be on the work session agenda. So go ahead and wait until the next, wait until the next public comment period, then you're
Thank you.
more than welcome speaker. All right. Mr. Fitzgerald? Nope, you're good? Okay. All right. All right. All right, uh, Mr. Knapp?
Ron Knapp from Nanticoke. As I stated, I had a little bit more to add to this, this very serious subject of opioid and the money, resources that is necessary.
This is on the voting agenda, the opioid.
It is.
Yeah, it's a budget.
It's a budget amendment for the opioid crisis, correct?
If you're going to be speaking about the budget amendment, that's fine, but if you're going to be talking about other things that are going on with opioid.
No. I, I'm trying to explain to you that, that it's important that we do this for our county, and I say this because I was actually a part of a pill farm. I have lower back problems in this prescription that I was given for eight years. And the point I'm trying to make is, is this man was put in jail for people dying. And the thing I wanted to mention is that there's money that, yes, should be issued for this problem and the, the, the promotion of this, passing of the amendment. But it's important also to know that, that through faith, I was able to wean myself off and opioids. Okay? And that, that is a means of eliminating drug abuse as well. I just wanted to share that. Eight years on high doses of hydrocodone for my lower back. Yes, we should, uh, make the, make the, uh, progress in, for the money for, for opioid, you know, qualling it, but there is also faith for resolution in this too. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Speaking, we are on the voting session of the work.
Voting. Anybody else for voting session agenda items only? Anybody else here in the public? Anybody on the Zoom? Mr. Griffith?
Uh, yes, thanks. Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Chair. The item I'd like to address council on is item number eight regarding the 40-foot advisory board, council member appointment. Uh, this position is very, very important, uh, for council to act on, and the person who gets appointed to that, um, quite honestly, has a, has to get this advisory board up and running. I know it's been dormant for quite a few years, about eight years. We just recently, in the controller's office, did an audit of the Wamby Valley Airport in
We just recently in the Controller's Office did an audit of the Wyoming Valley Airport in forty fort. And the biggest issue that was was which was identified by my uh, former county controller, Michelle Bednar, as well as myself is. That the forty four advisory board is non functioning. And that's a that's a direct reflection on county council. So the person who is going to be on that board, I strongly suggest be somebody who's strong enough to make sure that we can get the members. Uh, to convene and have meetings quarterly as as prescribed, so we can can move that facility forward. Uh, we do a lot of uh, repairs and things to that airport. And it's critical that the county have eyes on that process. And that's the advisory board is our eyes. Um, I think that that's something that's very, very important. So I I strongly encourage council to appoint somebody who's gonna oversee that process and get that uh, advisory board moving in the right direction. So we can, you know, that's a great facility and and we just need to get a better handle on what's done there. So uh, please keep that in mind as we appoint members to from council to sit on that board. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Griffin. Uh, anybody else for public comment?
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Raybo. God. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, with regards to the whole whole home uh, repairs program. Uh, I strongly am in support of uh, this program. The county needs needs to have this. Uh, adopted desperately because of uh, what transpired during the pandemic. Uh, we have uh, seniors and those on disability that can't afford uh, to make repairs to their homes. And those uh, because those uh, repairs go uh, undone. Uh, it therefore uh, results in uh, deterioration of those homes, therefore becoming blighted. And Mr. Chair, I don't have to explain to you or other members of council that uh, blight is uh, is 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 go is exponentially uh, going up. And uh, in the worst way, because this county back in two thousand seventeen. Is behind two million dollars a year just because of blight. It causes it causes uh, the uh, you know, um, the the deterioration in in terms of the diminishing of the tax rolls. Of two million dollars per year. So that right there should tell you that this is the desperately needed. And Mr. Chair, I don't also have to remind you that uh, with regards to the appointments to the boards, that there's a board that's being uh, neglected. And that's because of the pandemic I also, and that is the Blighted Property Committee. The boroughs and the townships desperately need. Uh, that committee to be up and running and uh, because we don't want it to go to uh, the land bank and then have it uh. Demolished. And then what's gonna happen? It becomes a vacant lot. Uh, you know, and the county loses money on those on those properties. So, Mr. Chairman and members of council, please, I implore you to take proactive measures. To encourage residential uh, improvements, so it improves our tax base because residence residential properties. Are the lion's share of our tax base, not commercial properties. I would remind everyone of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anyone else for public comment? Agenda items only. Anybody else on the Zoom? No. All right. The minutes. The minutes. You mean, oh, all right, all right, motion by Mr. McGinnley, second by Mr. Thoron. All in all in favor? Close, no. Minutes are approved. All right, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the Luzerne County zoning map to rezone one parcel of property totaling zero point eight two seven acres in Houston Borough. From L I light industrial district zone to R two, two family residence district zone.
So move Venus.
Motion by Mr. Venus, second by Mr. Lovovich. Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott, yes. Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Yes.
And.
Motion to adopt the ordinance amending the twenty twenty three fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for the opioid settlement money.
Second, the scavenge.
First by Mr. Thornton, second by Mr. Julius Scavenges. Roll call.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott, yes.
Mr. McGinnley. Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Venus.
Yes. Yes. Motion to adopt the ordinance amending the twenty twenty three fiscal year budget for the Luzerne County Election Integrity Grant.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Julius Scavenges, second by uh, Mr. McGinn. Uh, roll call.
Mr. McDermott, yes. Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to introduce the ordinance amending the twenty twenty three fiscal year budget for the Luzerne County Hall Home Repairs. First by Mr. Lovovich, second by Mr. Urban. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott, yes. Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. Motion to introduce the ordinance amending the twenty twenty three fiscal year budget for Luzerne County State Foreclosure Grant.
So move Thornton. Second Venus.
Motion by Mr. Thornton, second by Mr. Venus. Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott, yes. Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to adopt the resolution confirming the appointment of the Corrections Division Head.
So move the scavenge. Check it, Thornton.
Motion in a second.
On the question.
On the question. Go ahead.
Uh, just for further clarification. Motion is to uh, adopt the resolution confirming the appointment of the Corrections Division Head. In the resolution, the last uh, one of the last paragraph reads, now therefore be resolved. The county council wishes to confirm the appointment of James Wilbur. As a Corrections Division Head for Luzerne County and a salary set by the county manager of eighty thousand eighty seven thousand per year plus benefits. In keeping with the current Luzerne County budget and I'd like to make that as part of the overall motion.
Is that, um, would that be an amendment?
No.
That's okay, it's a. Oh, okay, it's just, okay, all right.
Just reading portion of the resolution.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right, so there's a motion in a second.
Motion to table. And I, there is no other discussion after table. I just want to make it very clear. It's not the candidate situation, it's the fact that our procedure. And I think our procedure needs to be addressed. Motion to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right, uh, we'll have a roll call on the motion to table.
No.
Mr. Thornton.
No.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
No.
Mr. Venus.
No.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
No.
Mr. McDermott, no. Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
No.
Mr. Lombardo.
No.
Two yes.
All right, motion, motion to table fails on the question, Mr. Urban.
Um, this afternoon I had learned that someone that applied did not get an interview during the process. Also learned, you know, one, one person that did apply. You know, quite, well, just right after the interview occurred, the H R director leaves the county employment. Quite honestly, I don't know how influential, you know, she was during the process. Yeah, and with the decision of this person, you know, possibly continuing on. You know, in the process, but I'm not comfortable with the process, the way it went down. I I have to echo Mr. McGinnley sentiments regarding the entire process. I would rather see the process start over. I I think council should be afforded a little bit more than like a two sheater on on the individual. Nothing against you, Mr. Wilbur at all, okay? Uh, but I wasn't supplied your entire resume. I was just supplied with just partial. You know, a couple blurbs, so I didn't get to see your entire resume. And and I do have some questions, you know, I mean, uh, speaking with someone today, I mean, like I said, I don't like the way the process transpired. I think it's a reflection on the county manager and his staff, uh, when the former individual that was in in the H R position. I think, you know, with with H R currently there, I think that, you know, that's the really not a merit based hiring system if somebody's not afforded. An opportunity to even interview that had had applied. Actually had worked for this county too previously, so um. So I mean, I I'm unfortunately not gonna be able to support you today. I mean, as much as I want to work together as a team. You know, the process stinks and we need to fix it at the top, the food chain here with the county manager, starting with his his H R staff. And and the Office of Law, because I know the Office of Law was in on the interview process. And I don't know why the county attorney would be on on an interview panel for for that type of position. I I would think it may be a different admin or or different department head would be there. And the attorney should probably be asked questions if there were some legal problems, but I don't know if the Office of Law should be staying neutral and be out of the interview process. So that's what I've learned today. And it was late this afternoon that I learned some of this information and and I think the process stinks. I think we need to start over.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Mr. Spleck, you don't want to comment on that as well, do you? Okay, all right, that's fine. I've just given you an opportunity if you want one. All right, uh, there's a motion in a second. Uh, roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
No.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott. My vote is no, it's sent, it's uh, saying, Mr. Urban. Um, we don't get to see all the resumes, you know, we don't see all the applicants. It's hard to make a decision. Again, nothing personal, just that we don't get to see everything. Mr. McGinnley.
I'm voting no. I think I've already made my statement. I'm not happy with the process. It has nothing to do with the candidates.
Mr. Mitchell.
Also voting no.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Suggest.
All right, thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Wilbur.
Thank you.
All right, uh.
Congratulations.
We'll move on to council nominations and appointments to uh, Luzerne Conservation District Board of Directors. With, oh, I apologize.
To clarify.
Yeah, go ahead.
The Conservation Board, the Mental Health Board and the Can Do Board are actually board positions. They're done by resolution. The forty four airport is not a board member, it's just advisory position. So it does not have voting rights and it is not done by resolution, it's just an advisor. There was never an actual board member on that and is not required by any bylaws. Just so, that's why, that's the difference.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Okay, nominations for Luzerne Conservation District Board of Directors with a term ending of twelve thirty one twenty twenty three.
And the votes that have nominations open.
Wait, what?
Do we have open nominations? Yes.
Like to open nominations.
Okay.
I checked that motion to open them.
I would nominate.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Okay, nominations are open.
Okay, I would like to nominate Greg.
Second, nomination for Greg Lovovich by Mr. Venus, second by Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Second.
All right, motion close, uh, Mr. McGinnley, thank you, thanks. Of course, well. And uh, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, nominations are closed. All right, we'll uh, have the vote for the nomination of Mr. Lovovich.
Okay, first motion.
Yeah.
You're first and a second.
Yep.
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion. Motion by Mr. McDermott, second by Mr. Venus. Roll call.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott, yes. Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. All right, next we have the Luzerne Wyoming County Mental Health Developmental Services Program Advisory Board with a term ending twelve thirty one twenty three. Motion to open nominations.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDermott, second by Mr. Lovovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Steve Er.
Second.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lovovich, second by Miss McDermott. All in favor?
Aye.
Nominations are closed. Motion on the resolution.
Motion means.
Check it, Thornton.
Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott, yes. Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. Next we have Greater Hazelton Can Do Board of Directors with a term ending twelve thirty one twenty three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDermott, second by Mr. Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Nominations are open.
Nominate Mr. Perry.
Second Venus.
Mr. McGinnley, Venus for Mr. Perry. Motion of close by Miss McDermott.
Second Thornton.
Second by Mr. Thornton. Will have a nominate, will have the motion for the nomination after the resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Miss McDermott, second by Mr. Venus. Roll call.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott, yes. Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Belovich.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes. All right, now we have a motion for a nomination regarding the forty port airport advisory advisor, Mr. Councilmember.
Motion to open nominations.
Second.
Motion, Thornton. Second by Mr. Thornton, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd nominate Councilman Julius Scavenges, second.
Nomination by Mr. Venus, second by Mr. Lovovich, Councilman Scavenges.
Second to close nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, nominations are closed.
Motion to appoint Kevin Scavenges to the.
Oh, second. All right, motion by Miss McDermott, second by Mr. Thornton. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Julius Scavenges.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott, yes. Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Barton.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovich.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes. Thank you very much. Well, now, public comment on non agenda items. I have a few slips here. Ms. Hartman.
Thank you. Oh, two things. Um, one is an agenda item and one is a non agenda item.
Ms. Hartman, what town do you live in?
I'm sorry, Hanover Township.
Okay, thank you, I apologize.
That's okay. Um, I'm here so often, I thought maybe you knew, but that's okay. Um, so number six. Um, and the way the voting went down on that, and this has nothing to do with you at all. This has to do with policy, procedure and ethics. So you all didn't have the proper information. You all voted on that. To me, the people that voted to let that go through, I question your ethics. Okay, because I made, was that a job where I made a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars a year? Because I made, was at a job where I made a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a year. They changed the way they were going to do something that was going to affect my clients and I walked out the door. Because my name and my ethics were more important. So Steve said, and, and I said, Mr. Urban said, and Mr. McGinley said, they found out stuff today. And you had a chance to stop this vote and look at the resumes and find out what went on, why legal was in there. How this was rigged. If, if we can't count on you guys to have high ethics, how are we going to teach the rest of the county government that ethics is what we want in our county? So that's number one. Second thing is, I had the pleasure this week of meeting with Children and Youth Director, interim directors, and the new director. Katrina, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce her last name. She was appalled at half of the stuff that I told her. I'm going to meet with her again. I, I have to tell you that I've been fighting children and youth. I've been fighting everything. Tara Two Hill. I used her as an example. Tara Two Hill owns Brandon's Forever Home. Well, she was a co, she was a co-founder of Brandon's Forever Home. So when Michelle Bednar was controller, she did an audit of Brandon's Forever Home and found out that they were not providing the services that were required by the county. Children and youth terminated Brandon's Forever Home contract. The, the money in that contract that I brought up was three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a year. We were giving to Tara Two Hill's foundation, who is now a judge. So we're no longer, the county did that. So I'm asking our county controller to start auditing our nonprofits. Make sure that they're providing what's in the contract and let's get our ethics back on board. Because how can you collect three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars and not provide to the children of this county? Totally disgusting. And now she's a judge in the courthouse.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Mr. Griffin?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yeah. The, just want to say that I appreciate all your time as counsel. I know that a lot of these decisions are hard and, and time-consuming. I do agree, I don't agree with, you know, I was listening to her out there, so I didn't want to interrupt it till she was done. But I, I really do believe that, you know, you guys have a big job. I don't, I'm not a big fan of home role at all. To get paid eight grand and got lives and things and you're running our county. I just wish we could go back to the three members because it's just basically, you know, you guys, between the boards, the commissions. It's like sometimes it's like you're spitting your tires. I know you guys care, but you want to be devoting your time. I just think that it's just too cumbersome. And I think that, that the tail wags the dog in this county. I think the manager and the solicitor has more input than they should. I think you guys should have more input than they do. Like, that's what I believe in all my heart. I wish you guys would take control over that. I think that you should get your own solicitor. I think that should be a top agenda item. Because I don't, I believe the solicitor works for the county and the county employees. And I think that we should have a solicitor that sits there that works for you and us. We'll pay him, right, guys?
Yeah.
That's what we need. That's number one. At this new election, I would like, especially with the new terms and we're coming up for elections. I'm going to be requesting the people that are going. We're going to get it on the news. That's going to see if we could turn this around. So you guys won the county. And if not, if they don't do what you want, get them out. Because you guys, we elect you to help us. And right now, the tail is wagging the dog and I want the dog to wag the tail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Ms. Kalman?
Diane Kalman from Kingston. Good evening. I want to speak about the ARP grant funds. Obviously, it's hard for me to believe that on tonight's agenda, there's a brand-new proposal being presented for consideration in awarding these grant funds. After a very specific process was designed by booth management and accepted by this council many months ago, I cannot believe it's still in the discussion phase. Even more significant is that it is after the list of seventy-five qualified applicants was revealed that a new award proposal is being presented. This is in spite of the fact that the process that booth management designed and which was accepted by this council incorporated the elements of integrity, objectivity, and fairness as cornerstones of the project. All council members signed the rules of engagement, which included a code of conduct to promote confidentiality and objectivity while attempting to prevent conflict of interest. When it was revealed at the last meeting that five applications were never reviewed, council made the absolute correct decision to table a final vote to give them the opportunity to review these applications. Now, here we are tonight and we have an alternate award method that's going to be presented, which increases, increases the awardees from seventy-five to one-twenty-two by implementing a project cap designated as one hundred thousand for small businesses, five hundred thousand for nonprofits, and two million for municipalities. Not sure how these figures were decided upon and why small business is so much less than the other entities, many of whom did not make the original list of top scores. But with this formula, my project award will be cut by fifty-one percent. The amount I requested is specific down to the penny because that's what I need to complete my project. An award of one hundred thousand is not enough for me to do so. In review of the alternate award method, I noted that my business is one of only two top-scoring small businesses to have our requested grant amount cut. I also noted that there is one small business, as well as several municipalities, that are slated to receive two awards with this alternate method, which directly goes against the January twenty-fourth unanimous motion stating that only one submission for identifying information with the highest score will be accepted. Lastly, I noticed that there's municipal authority from Columbia County that's earmarked for over four hundred thousand. I'm not sure what that is. But I, in closing, I feel that despite meeting all the criteria and making the required score, I would be penalized with the new format. And I do not think that is fair that my project could be in jeopardy. I am a small business who provides a much-needed service and wants to expand to serve even more folks in our community. I am also a taxpayer and I employ caregivers who pay taxes, so I'm not looking for a free handout. I am looking for a boost to provide much-needed care to our loved ones with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. I'm almost done. I want to keep our loved ones out of nursing homes where sadly COVID was rampant and neglect often is as well. And with my expansion, I will put to use two long vacant county sites and implore even more county residents. So again, I'm absolutely not looking for a free ride and just asking you to stand by your original conviction and do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalman. Mr. Maslow, do you want to speak now?
Thank you. I come in peace. So Chad Maslow, Dallas Borough, and I'm also here to talk about ARP. I, am I allowed to say the organization that I represent? I mean, process is over. So.
Yeah, we're done scoring.
Yeah, so we're losers. So we're the lands at Hillside Farms. But what happened is when you started to change the process, there was revelations. So the tide went out. We saw who was swimming naked. And it looks like, if you compare the two graphic, the two graphics, that we not just didn't score well, that we don't qualify. And there's something wrong with that. It doesn't make sense looking at the original rules. It doesn't make sense that we don't qualify. And so we just, I just started looking and thinking conspiracy theories, like, hey, five people were missed. All five people that were missed or approved, the chances of that happening are around thirty percent statistically. And we didn't even qualify. So in the beginning, we just accepted, hey, we lost. There were better projects. But I think that there might be integrity issues or something missing in data. Maybe through no fault of anybody, there's something wrong because I do believe that we qualify. And I will second the previous speaker, even if it's to my own detriment. If somebody applies for, you know, ten dollars and you cut them down to five, you might be doing a lot of things that are alright instead of a few things that are great. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? Go ahead.
It's hard, Ron that from Nanicoke. It's hard to follow up with these last two commenters. The thing that, that really sets the people back in this booth management consulting and the three hundred thousand dollars we're on the hook for, is that accurate? Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I think that that has to be brought out. I mean, I have put my foot in my mouth enough tonight, but the fact that the matter is that has got people mad. Alright, so they're completely out of the mix now?
That's, that's not entirely accurate.
Okay.
But we still are using them and consulting with them.
Oh, that's good to hear.
Yeah, we have, we do have a contract.
I, I would.
And I believe that they're going to speak during the work session.
Unfortunately, the, the thing that I see here is Gollum, when he was trying to retrain, regain the gold ring, the ring of power. It's like looking at council here and even Frodo had a problem dropping the ring into the lava. You know, because, you know, that's, that's what, how, how people are perceiving this. That there's a lot of power with ninety-six million dollars. And I think that sums it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. Go ahead.
Amy Walsh from Ross Township. I put together a spreadsheet just of some of the award winners. Now, this was projected from your last list. I apologize for the small print, but I have a hard time reading it too. Some of the issues, some of the issues that are in front of us right now, that I really think need to be looked at. I'm just going to go right down the list from the highest award from the original list. That's what I did this off of. I did not see your guys' list until about three hours ago. The new list and how it's being done. But, um, so the Jewish Community Alliance in northeastern Pennsylvania already, already received a hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from PPP funding. So the reason I bring that up is because any award that any of these people get, if they received other government money, I believe it should be deducted. The Ashley Borough received a hundred and forty-two thousand from other ARP money. Greater Hazleton Joint Sewer Authority, which falls under Hazleton area, received seventeen million. Hazleton area received, Hazleton City received seventeen million dollars. Let, let the sewer authority go to them for money. The city of Wilkes-Barre, again, the city of Wilkes-Barre received thirty-seven million dollars. There's four or five organizations on here that want money in Wilkes-Barre. Let them go to the city of Wilkes-Barre. There's tons of money there. The other problem on your new list that I have, and I'm going to, I'm going to talk about two more. I, I could go down this whole list and I have a copy for the public, so you guys can, can look at this list too. But on this new list that you award, or that you have awarded, Hanover area asked for twenty million dollars. They just received, July of two thousand twenty-one, ten million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of ARP funding. They should be gone from this list. Crestwood asked for one million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. They received four point three seven million dollars from ARP funding already. They should be out the list. They blew their money so bad that they got a furlough twenty-two teachers up there now. Mismanagement of funds. We shouldn't be paying for their mismanagement of funds. I'm going to do another spreadsheet with your new list, but I'm asking, here's, here's how to cut this list in half and save us about thirty million dollars. Let's schedule a public interview with all these people and half of them won't show up because it's an embarrassment what they've asked for. There's also some small little league organizations on here asking for a half a million dollars. I run the Lake Lehman Junior Nights. Our budget is fifteen thousand dollars a year. What in the world does somebody need a half a million dollars for a little league? This is supposed to go to people that were hurt from COVID.
Mr. Walsh, I gave you plenty of.
It has nothing to do with that.
Anybody else for public comment? Go ahead, Ms. Beazak.
I apologize. I was right. I'm a small business. I'm always working. So I hope everyone is having a fantastic day.
Ms. Beazak, your municipality you live in?
Edwardsville, Pennsylvania. My business hopefully will be located in forty-four. Amy Beazak, I'm sure everybody is familiar with who I am, of Amy Beazak Photography. I think I've been in every council meeting since I've applied for this grant. Literally, every council meeting I could possibly be in. So. Let me just oozle for a second. Okay. While there are other entities that are worthy, approved applicants should not be pared down. Okay, I'm going to keep this really simple. Let's talk about inflation. Has anybody on council done any construction renovations or anything to do with building materials in the past two years? And, and seriously, raise your hand if you have. So for people to understand what I might be talking about. Inflation has increased over fifteen percent. I have researched so many different sites and I could reference one in particular. The internet service isn't this good, isn't good in this room, but I would definitely research and read Markham accountants and advisors and how they discuss construction industry and inflation and where it's going because it's going to continue to get worse. So with me saying that, and knowing all the projects, if anybody is in this list that is going to do something with infrastructure, I think everyone is going to be rudely awakened with their budget not coming on point at all. Because construction costs continue to skyrocket. I'm, I'm living proof. The commercial sector itself increased, for me, fifty-six percent. So is it cool if I approach council to show you numbers so people actually see and comprehend what I am dealing with as a small business? Is it cool?
If you want, I mean.
I, I know, I only have so much time, but it's, it takes so, so quick, so quick because I work so hard. I just want to show everybody, six hundred and thirty-two thousand for this project to be completed, which should cost two hundred and fifty thousand. I'll come around. Currently, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-nine cents has been invested. Which is already over projected. I'm out. Currently, I still.
Please make sure you email this to us afterwards.
I, I totally will. I, I like, because I wanted to tap in, but I knew I probably wouldn't have power. But I mean, I have numbers here to show inflation on a level. And my fear, being in the project and having been in the project for over a year, I seriously fear a lot of infrastructure projects in this room. God bless, God love. I, I'm just a little nervous. If anybody changes the original intentions for this grant. Thank you very much.
Anybody else for public comment? Go ahead, sir. State your name and municipality, please.
Michael Danton, Kingston.
I'm sorry, what was your last name, sir?
Danton, D-A-N-T-O-N-E. And it's about the grant. I'm sure you have an attorney there. He could explain to you what vested interest is. I have a vested interest in the grant. I paid someone to fill out the grant along with the parameters. And then it was all through your want-to-be-done confidentiality. Then once the names broke and the businesses broke, then it didn't become confidentiality and you guys changed everything. There's also lawsuits in other areas where this has happened. So before you guys open that door to do that, there's also called the Ku Klux Klan Act where people get intimidated by people that are mad that people are getting grants. This isn't just something that you guys handed out. This is a very stringent policy that you guys did. This wasn't just, you have a tax ID number. You had to fill out a lot of things. This wasn't just a one-year business. And some people aren't taking advantage of it. And this was supposed to be released and, but everybody keeps waking up every day. There's eleven people that have to agree to it and it's very hard. And this gentleman said that the award letters were supposed to go out two weeks ago. And the dispersment was supposed to be this week or the first. And now you want to change the rules. What happened to the rules? And what happened to the confidentiality? If you guys do change it, you guys are breaking your own rules of confidentiality and opening yourself up to possible legal action. That I'm sure nobody wants to talk about because people just want help. But when you talk about confidentiality and then the names come out and then everybody says, oh, no, they're not supposed to get it. They're not supposed to get it. You guys put the parameters up and people fell into parameters. People got disqualified. People were, and now people are mad. So are you guys going to stand behind what you did or are you guys going to change because the names got put out? People don't like someone's last name or people don't like a certain business. People qualified for that under your rules that you guys set up. You guys set up the rules, not us, not booth management. You guys set up the rules. And you guys scream these names without knowing the names. Then you scored them and then now you know the names and now you're like, no.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Just a quick comment. Joe Grantee from Blaine. We talked, talked a little bit about inflation. And I just want to say that elections have consequences. Inflation was two percent two years ago. Now it's twenty percent. So anybody complaining about inflation, they want to look at what they, their choices in the last couple of years.
Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom call? Okay, I know there's a couple. Mr. Herron?
Yeah, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes. Just, we just need your talent, sir.
Yeah, Durie. Ben Herron from Durie. I wanted to address one thing and then, holy cow, all the public comment kind of brings out a whole lot of other things to look into. First and foremost, I would say that if, if, if being unethical in government was a crime that you would be sued for, as, as one gentleman stated, then I think we'd have to start all over tomorrow with a brand-new government everywhere you look. The fact that you guys set up a process in place here and hired booth management to conduct what is called kind of blind interviews. I don't see where that puts you up to litigation whatsoever. So I would, I, I'm sure there's many people that would agree with that. Anyways, as far as the awards, my colleague and friend, Mr. Walsh, was speaking to before he had to leave. But, you know, I appreciate what you guys did as far as hiring a company and trying to make a conflict of interest look or trying to avoid any conflict of interest or any partiality towards a certain group. I think that was, it was, it was a, a good, a welcome. Towards a certain group. I think that was it was it was a a good, well conceived idea. But I think once, you know, the the media got involved and we started seeing names out there, of course, that creates a little bit of an issue. Um, so I mean, as far as the list that came out, I do agree and we do have a comprehensive list um with some some of our own notes on there as Jamie alluded to. But yeah, the school district is asking for twenty and two million dollars when they've already received a ton of money. That to me is a complete conflict right there. Um, what did you do with the money that you were given in the first place? We all want our children to go to school and learn and have all the resources at their fingertips. But again, I think what what a lot of folks really need to understand is due to inflation and taxes, we're we're paying for this twice. We as the taxpayers, okay? Um, if I wanna do a project in my house, guess what I do? I make a budget and I go see what I can afford to do and I do it. Okay, I don't get any any, you know, subsidies or or money from the government. Again, you guys went through a process and asked for this money, but it's not, it's not um not gonna be subject to criticism, especially when you look at the list and see who's on there as far as the the folks that are getting the money. So um, I would just implore the board as you guys go through this process. I know it's very complex and it's a very difficult thing. Um, but as far as the 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 dollar values and who's asking for this money um to kind of stamp on that covid point. We've all dealt with the last three years. We've all had our own situations at home and at work. These folks that are getting this funding should be impacted and should have been impacted by the pandemic. It should not just be let me apply for money because the government's giving it out because guess who the government is? It's me. It's the taxpayer that's paying for this, not only through my taxes, but also through the inflation right now. So everybody needs to be mindful of that. And if there's gonna be criticism that comes out with this because the media is reporting on it, not the county council, then so be it.
Thank you. Um, Devin.
Yes, um, Devin Reese from Plymouth. Um, I just also want to.
Can you say your last name again?
Reese, R E E S E.
Thank you.
I just wanted to touch base on the fact how um city council um all um voted on the new county manager. Um, again, as Beth and the other gentleman said, I work side by side with Beth and I just think that again, ethically, that was very morally wrong. Um, I think that we should really focus on exactly what agenda items that we are approving. And making sure that we're doing research on those agenda items, especially if we're not getting the full um information on it. And it was brought to everybody's attention. I just don't feel that that should have even been um voted on. And I think that should have been on a later discussion, on a later agenda. That's my personal opinion on that. Um, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. And we voted on the division head for correctional services, not county manager, just so you're aware.
Um, that's what I meant. I do apologize.
That's okay. That's okay. Vivian.
Hi, this is Vivian Crydall Estina from Nescapeck, Pennsylvania. Did you do the vote yet on the um the new um electronic poll books?
No, there's nothing on this agenda related to that, ma'am.
I thought there was, then I I'm I'm sorry.
Just the election integrity grant, which maybe there was some discussion somewhere about purchasing poll books with that, but nothing we talked about tonight.
Okay, then just concerning the A R P money, um, I know yous are all working very hard on it. Um, you're trying to do what's right for everybody. Um, what I, if it was me personally, I would take all the applicants that applied and I would give them each a certain amount of money and that would be it. I mean, I I across the board, if you wanna give fifty thousand dollars to each business, that's what I would do to make it fair for everybody. That that's really all I have to say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Uh, Controller Griffith.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mister Vice Chair. Uh, comments for the council on the uh first question, the first comment is on the Act thirteen money. Uh, kudos to the committee that met last week regarding the Act thirteen funds. We have some seriously uh impassable roads in the county. I received a couple of calls today from from people that go down old one eighteen in Dallas towards Penn State. And they say that road is so bad, you can almost, it's almost undrivable. Uh, so we should start using this Act thirteen money to start fixing these roads. And I know it's very expensive to pave roads. It's like a a million dollars a mile. But we need to start allocating our county money that we get from the state for these grants and these um uh funds that we get to for the good cause of the people of the county. That Act thirteen money can be used to pave roads. We should use it for that. Uh, on the A R P funds, I think I think the ability for us to release the names of people that applied that did not get the grant. That were not in the award process, I think taints the process. I think the confidentiality has been skewed much to Mister Date uh Date Danton's comment. Uh, there's people that did 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 apply for those A R P money, were not put on the scoring sheet, were not awarded any uh funds yet that their names were released now to the public to say that they were uh they applied. So therefore, I think the confidentiality clause that's in the federal guidelines has been tainted. So I don't know how that affects us for federal grants and the ability for us to have to possibly pay that money back at some point. But I'd be very, very careful to be sure that we're not uh circumventing the federal guideline on that, as Ms. Booth cautioned us at the very onset of this process. And we were not supposed to divulge confidentiality to the point where we weren't even allowed to have people speak at the podium about their grant application until the award was listed. So I think we have some issues there. Uh, on the McCarthy lease coming up on the work session, I seriously think that of anything that we received good from the previous county manager, Randy Robertson. I think the one thing that came out of that whole issue with him was that he spoke with consolidating the McCarthy lease and getting out of that building and going across the street. I think that's a great step in the right direction to save the county taxpayers almost a half a million dollars in leasing. I think we have the space over there as was uh identified by building and grounds and the engineering department. And I think that's something that council should move in a positive way to save taxpayers' money. I I think that that's that's one of the one of the biggest issues that we could do to try and save money and and make the make the tax base go down. Uh, the Act thirteen money, again, we could use that to offset the general fund as well. Um, I I just think that we need to be proactive in trying to save taxpayers' money uh and and possibly look at that issue. Uh, and I see my time is up, so I'll I'll finish up there. Thank you, Mister Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mister Griffith. Uh, Pat Smith.
Hi, Pat Smith, Hanover Township. Uh, in the beginning of December, the Luzerne County Office of Law submitted a report to county council. The report referred to an incident that occurred November ninth at the Bureau of Elections. The incident involved Board of Elections member Alicia Fusero and another citizen. According to testimony from thirteen people who were there when the incident occurred, Ms. Fusero, along with another citizen cursed and took photos of election workers and the two were later escorted out of the building by the sheriff's department. County council decided to table the vote to remover because they wanted to hear Ms. Fusero's side of it. The council never came back to discuss their findings and take the vote, even though thirteen witnesses stated the findings of the report were true. I read in a newspaper, the Indiana University of Pennsylvania College Newspaper, no less, that a member of council said the matter was a non-issue and no vote would take place. This was not discussed at a public meeting. Does the councilman have the authority to cancel a vote from council out of requests from the Office of Law? I don't think so. Regardless of whether Ms. Miss Fusero made a racial slur, she caused an unnecessary disruption along with a friend who had no business being there, so much so that the Election Bureau revoked permissions from election board members to enter the election office for the recent special election to prevent another similar incident. Furthermore, another councilman admitted to the newspapers that he was on the phone advising this Fusero on what to do during the incident. This interference with an election by a council member is stated in the charter. Council needs to revisit the vote before this becomes a workplace harassment lawsuit and I hope that all media people present there will pursue this and help council bring it to an end. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, a very concerned citizen.
Hi, John Lombardo. My name is Joseph, Joseph, Joseph McKay from Laughlin, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead, sir.
Sir, has there been any updates on the November eighth uh election investigation from our district attorney?
Uh, we have not heard anything from him.
Because last I heard, uh, I think he put out or council put out that there's supposed to be an outcome by the end of January and that's the end of February.
Yeah, we 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 haven't heard anything back from him, sir. Yeah, we we just haven't heard anything back from him yet.
Well, it sounds like his uh department is uh lacking resources. So maybe council needs to provide him with uh additional resources. I don't know if he needs a contracted private investigators. We have an election coming up in May. And we don't have this investigation closed yet. We don't know if somebody, you know, there was wrongdoing or what sort of corrective actions we need to take place for our May and November elections of this year. But uh really, it's silent right now, but and we have elections coming up. Also, I'd like to make sure that our uh Election Bureau is like fully funded, that they have enough money for paper and and toner and calibration of scanning devices. So there's no more problems. I mean, forty four precincts were were denied the right to vote on uh November eighth and we don't have any answers. That's all I have to say. Hopefully, our district attorney gives us an answer soon.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? Mister Raybo.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, with respect to uh the county roads that um I I've been saying since the beginning of the budget season last year that I I urge council to look at the raise applying for the federal D O T raise grant for the West Nanticoke Bridge in addition to the Water Street Bridge. Uh, you decided to take the advice of uh Mister Kurtz and Mister Plesh that uh applying for a grant app put in another grant application for uh the West Nanticoke Bridge would lend it to be in competition with the county over the Water Street Bridge. And I looked at the history of the raised grant in it, which was the Tiger Grant was the predecessor of the raised grant. And nowhere did I find that there was any kind of issue where a municipality or a county applied for two bridge grants and didn't get awarded at least something for the second application. So I believe strongly based on the evidence that that was an excuse given to you by Mister Kurtz, by Mister Plesh and basically negated West Nanticoke from getting any money from that federal D O T grant. Which then now lends uh the rest of the municipalities in the county off that basically won't get any county roads to be funded. Today was the deadline. February twenty eighth was the deadline. And Mister Plesh and Mister Kurtz took it upon themselves to not to to basically ignore the the West Nanticoke uh application and basically render the other municipalities for their county roads to not get any funding. Shame on them. They should resign. And as far as the A R P grants, why is it that uh there's there uh under Mister Mitchell's plan? I hope I'm wrong on this, but there's quite a few names uh and companies on here that received other monies from uh the state. And also they received A R P monies. I hope I'm wrong on this, but I hope they didn't just apply for the sake of applying because the county was giving out money. And I think booth management needs to take that into consideration on the application process if those entities received other A R P funds either from the municipalities or by the state. Because this looks to me, and I hope I'm wrong, but this gives the perception that this is an end around. This is an end around for campaign donations coming up for this year's election. I hope I'm wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Raybo. Anybody else for public comment? Oh, I apologize. We do a couple emails. All right, uh, this one is from Evelyn O'Hara Stein. Do do Luzerne Luzerne County Council, as a resident of Wright Township, Luzerne County, I'm writing to request that you do not honor any request now or in future for Luzerne County's flood protection authority about re restructure restructuring the way levy protection is funded in Lower Luzerne County for those who live by the river and those who do not. I suggest that funds are needed grants from the state and federal government to be sought, not demanded from residents who aren't affected by flooding along the Susquehanna River. I understand that the request they are going to make is that Richard Adams wants all county residents to share the cost of levy protection rather than just property owners and designated floodplain and portions of flood municipalities. The levy protection fee is currently being paid by property owners in the floodplain. Any municipalities residents who choose to live in the floodplain and has flood insurance is not the responsibility of those of us who do not live near the Susquehanna River. Especially those of us who live in Fairview, Wright, Rice Door and Slocombe Townships in New Angola. Borough comprises the C D P census designated population of mountain top. It should also not include any area of southern Luzerne County that live in a mountainous area. It makes no sense to make the above mentioned municipalities and any municipalities residents who do not live in a floodplain pay for those who choose to live in a floodplain. I understand that in some circumstances, that is not always possible. Richard Adams reasoning comparing flood protections to maintenance and repair of county or roads makes no sense. He may be correct that all taxes taxes paid by all county property owners pay for county roads, even though they only run through some of the county's municipalities, doesn't hold weight. The river does not run through mountainous areas of the county. And I'm sure if you did a survey of all county residents, you would find that those of us who live in these areas do so in order not to be affected by Susquehanna River flooding and or high flood protection insurance. In closing, I reiterate my request to not even consider this request by the L C F P A. Further requests, if you use all available funds to fix our county road before you choose to use any funds to replace the West Nanticoke. This is from Laura Panero from Wyoming. Dear council members, you are being asked by authority board member Richard Adams from Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority to restructure the way levy protection along the Susquehanna River is funded. Mister Adams believes all Luzerne County residents should share the cost of levy protection rather than just those who live choose to live in the designated floodplain of the seventy six municipalities. Only twelve are affected by this floodplain. Why is this even being discussed? Why are some communities being put ahead of others? This same logic is being applied to the West Nanticoke Bridge. All seventy six municipalities will lose access to three million dollars per year for the next twenty five years to fund one bridge in one municipality. What are tax dollars I use to fund safe new roads for the entire county and we are receiving the full list of government responsibility to people in competent manner, then you can ask us to help those who seconds who seconds only count in one municipality and who have chosen to live in a designated floodplain. Why is this request on the agenda, Madam Chair? Serving the people was an oath you took when we are asking that roads and our right to safety be placed on the agenda. We'd like to hear public discussion regarding our council's plans to fix our roads. Laura Panero. All right, uh, this is from Cindy Brandon, Wright Township. Uh, dear council members, voter suppression in Luzerne County is real. Three of four Brandon votes did not count in most recent special election. This scenario was one hundred percent the result of Luzerne County Bureau of Elections errors. We have the phone records and numerous emails as well as discussion with Adam and the state farmer to prove it. Now, you, Miss McBride, no one in the administration will answer or correct the errors. That is called voter suppression. It affected both parties. Today is the raised grant deadline, February twenty eighth. Residents of Luzerne County in the majority do not want the West Nanticoke Bridge to cost us seventy five million dollars. You must submit a new list of projects for the entire loan amount of fifty four point nine million dollars. Do not fail us again, please. I've been hospitalized in ICU but continue to watch council meetings and take the time to send you letters because I cannot get to the podium. I ask that you answer my question regarding new projects for the fifty four point nine million dollar loan that your last meeting and instead you continued on to the next letter. Please answer my questions. What is your intent to get February twenty eighth so that the grant request could not be placed? Um, why not request for the Water Street Bridge and West Nanticoke Bridge and hope you get one? You are wasting residents' money. I yield my remaining three minutes for comments related to these topics. Let us hear you. Go ahead, Mister Far.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair. Uh, just two issues I'd like to address quickly regarding comments made here in public tonight, not regarding A R P. Uh, that'll be discussed later. Uh, there was comments from two residents during this public discussion period where they stated that council, they questioned the ethics of council in hiring uh Mister James Wilber as the Corrections Division head tonight with official action that took earlier this evening. And uh, since my ethics were questioned, I I'm compelled to answer. Council was provided, at least I was, and I went out, I saw, went out to all of council several days ago, the resume of this individual for inspection and had the opportunity to pick up a phone or uh call the administration and ask questions. call the administration and ask questions. Secondly, we had an opportunity to discuss one-on-one with Mr. Wilber and ask any questions we, we desired. I personally asked many questions of Mr. Wilber. I questioned his resume. I questioned his experience. I questioned any ongoing issues that may exist at the prison. And I, I just feel compelled to answer when my ethics were called into question for voting to appoint Mr. Wilber. Those who voted no, could vote no. I mean, that's why you have eleven person council. They're not comfortable with the process. I think they all said it's not Mr. Wilber personally. Uh, it has nothing to do with them. It's the process that they would like to see changed and revised, and I agree with them. But that's why we take a public vote and I'd like to defend the ethics of, of myself and those on this council body. The second issue I want to address quickly, since character uh, dispersions were cast and character assassination against Ms. Alyssa Fasaro. She serves on our election board where the individual on the telephone tonight said there were thirteen witnesses who heard or testified that they heard her address or send out ethnic slurs towards people that day on November ninth. The fact of the matter is, the report we received, the written report conducted by the Office of Law showed that not a single witness of the thirteen witnesses asserted that they heard Ms. Fasaro direct ethnic slurs towards anyone that day. And not even the main plaintiff herself, did she assess or assert rather that she heard ethnic slurs addressed or, or directed towards any individual. So since she's not here to defend herself and her name was brought up in public with the newspapers here, I just felt it necessary to defend that statement. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Thor.
Mr. Thor.
Go ahead. Yep.
First of all, I think there's a lot of misinformation regards ARP grants. Number one, the list that was in the paper, the list that was provided and had the applicants and unfortunately decide what the number of dollars they requested. There is no grant. There is no grant, no council act. Makes a decision. Number two, that list that appeared in the paper, I personally was not happy with that because I did know that there was a question about people who didn't get any potential grant, those people did. I didn't think that was a good way to start by listing a list of applicants. The other ones are in limbo. It also mentioned something about the rules of the procedure. And we did have some things in place, procedures in place. But unfortunately, as was brought out two weeks ago, there was a group of five applicants that were not scored or not evaluated. Obviously, those people deserve to score or evaluate. And as you, somebody alluded to, since we had all that other information out there, I don't know how you could fairly, by the way, score those versus anyone else because we had all that information. So that presents a major problem, I think, for the council. And lastly, this is one that thinking about it after the fact. After the fact doesn't make any difference. Scoring, we started with an idea that sixty points out of seventy-five would be the goal in order for someone to be evaluated and be eligible beyond that list. Well, we found that we didn't have enough people scoring sixty. And we had to go all the way down and recommend number, I think, from this book, like thirty-four point seven. That is a little bit less than half of the potential scoring points. If I had known that before we got to the meeting, I probably would have said, that's not correct. To go below fifty percent, I think was, was not the proper thing. So yes, we had a procedure. Yes, we tried to follow some rules, but obviously we had some challenges. And now we have to address those challenges because we still have an obligation. We do something, give ARP money and provide help and assistance to citizens at large in a lot of different areas. So there's no easy answer. I applaud Mr. Mitchell to try and put something together. And as Mr. Mitchell indicated, that's a starting point. That's a starting point. But no decisions from the county until council happens. My two cents, and I'm sorry that some of this has happened, but I'll have to go back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinn. Mr. Urban?
Uh, just quickly on the ARP process, I think, you know, we need to stick by the rules that we agreed upon, you know, publicly. Uh, I think the change it midstream is moving the goalpost and I don't think we should be doing that. Now, however, those, those five individuals that were missed, I think, quite honestly, I think the eleven of us scored unfairly or ones that did score them scored fairly because uh, if you recall, we did five other pools. We knew who pool one was first. We then went on to pool two, pool three, pool four, and pool five. So if we wanted to be biased, that bias would have came out, you know, after the first pool was actually disclosed to us in, as individuals. So I don't, I don't think, you know, that argument could be really held. I mean, I think those five that were scored at the end just, you know, it was an honest mistake maybe on, on Booth's part. Uh, and I think, you know, objectively, we probably scored them fairly. And if they made the list, then it was done fairly. Uh, and, and, and quite honestly, I think we should stick to our own rules and, and not move it else. We might as well just throw the entire process out again and start over for a third.
Dr. To be anonymous.
You're welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Any, anybody else?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I was gonna wait till later to comment. I want to I want to
Everybody in the audience, please.
I want to reiterate because some people in the public tonight talked about that list that was made public was the award list. There is no award list, period. There have been no award list. No award happens or occurs until council publicly votes to award money to some entity. So I just want to clarify that. And the second thing is going with booth consulting, uh, management company was, was that a sincere effort by this council to eliminate impropriety. We knew from the very beginning that there's nothing, if we didn't have a process like that and outsider from out of state, there's nothing to stop me from calling up Mr. Perry and saying, hey, I really, I really need you to support this project in the Pittston area. And what do you need down in Hazelton? Oh, and whether or not it automatically complied, what if it didn't really exactly comply with the act? There'd be these quid pro quo deals. And we knew there's eleven council members. Everyone's trying to get their projects for their hometown, maybe a little more than others. So we said, let's eliminate that. Let's give it a some outside entity. And let's let them, let us send us the apps one at a time and evaluate them. So the process or our decision to go with them was a sincere and a logical one strategically. However, along the way, the process was compromised through no fault of anybody here in council. There were several members of council that were blocked out of certain pools of applications. We have generally one week to evaluate a lot of applications and they're extensive. Each application with all the attachments could number twenty, thirty, thirty-five pages that had to be read. We'd get thirty-five applications at a time. Thirty-five times thirty-five, I know is over a thousand pages to read. Meantime, we're trying to go to work, trying to go to work every day, our full-time job. Come home midnight, one in the morning, try to evaluate before the end of the deadline, which is a, a day away. And then a couple of us, I know Mr. The Scavenger and myself is more drastically. We were blocked out. We couldn't evaluate the apps and boom, at midnight, that's it. They pull the apps back. You can't even see them again. No matter what you do on your computer, the apps are gone. And they told us when midnight comes, you can't evaluate them anymore. Nor in the future could you evaluate it. And that happened to me. That happened to him drastically. So is that fair to those applicants that didn't even get evaluated by several council members? Let's say they were just on the cusp mathematically of, of qualifying, but they fell just below the minimum level. And he and I, let's say, if we had those apps, might have given them high scores. Well, then it would have qualified, but they didn't have an opportunity. Maybe they were only evaluated by eight or nine council members out of eleven. That's not the fault of anybody here in this room. It was a technological snap, where it was bugged that occurred within the process that came from booth management. And I don't know how we fairly move on with the original. I don't like that they put that original seventy-five list out there. But I mean, the fact that council members didn't evaluate all the apps, that's not fair either. So we're, if we were to award, ignoring that fact, we're wrong. And now we're here and if we change it, we're wrong. Well, no, this is like, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place here. To no fault of ours. And we try to do the right thing. Things happen along the way through no fault of us, and we're just trying to fix it the best way we can. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thor. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, meeting's adjourned. Seven twenty-four, we'll start the work session at seven thirty-five. Turn your mics off.
Good luck. Yeah, good luck.
Sure.
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three.
Turn your mics off.
Six minutes for me.
I'll leave that be. I really need the. Are we on? Yeah. Alright. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus.
President.
Mr. Gavin.
Here.
Mr. Roberto.
Here.
German.
Here.
McGinley.
Present.
Mr. Mitchell.
Harry.
Yep.
Mr. Radel.
Mr. Norton.
Here.
Mr. Irvin.
Here.
Here.
Ten of eleven.
Alright, thank you. Any additions or deletions to the work session agenda?
Motion to adopt it.
Motion by Mr. McGinley, second by Mr. Thorin. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Alright, agenda's adopted. Alright, State of the County report?
Sure. Thank you by Chairman Lard. Citizens, council, colleagues, and role guests. County man is required to give his or her state or county address in two months' time to fiscal year. This year, the standard of the county will also serve as a hundred day report as that milestone was passed over this past weekend. In the past one hundred days, two seminars highlighted my time as acting manager. First, Colonel Ted Stutter spoke to county staff on leader speech and briefly summarized like his personal life experience. Secondly, I listened to Bill Renaldi speak at the Hastings Chamber at Red Card for Breakfast about training employees. He had some former employees speak, also recognized his work in getting them to where they work today. These seminars demonstrate how our county needs to develop job progression charter employees, regardless of an employee eventually stays for one day or over twenty years or so. In preparing this address, it became apparent to me that our top goal should be employee training. Since the pandemic, times have changed with regards to employment. And if county administration wants to make a difference, it must be hiring, training, and retention of employees to help us serve the great people who deserve talent. Many entities, both public and private, provide employees with weeks of formal training prior to starting employment, and then continuous training to hone their skills. Currently, Luzern County provides employees outside of corrections, nine-on-one, and the sheriff, a day-and-a-half orientation before they begin. The department still provide additional employee training. If we were able to invest more in our employees to make them feel more part of a team, we would build a better culture where employees are proud to work for the county. Remember, we serve a county of over three hundred twenty thousand residents with vast needs. And the county structure spans eight divisions. Any new manager or director needs more than just an orientation. We need to train and foster a county spirit. I'd like to thank all our current and past employees. Luzern needs to learn from both its past successes and failures. My current acting manager role, while confirmed by council, was shaped by previous work and life experiences, primarily obtained after completing my secondary education. The state of the county is changing. Six county council seats are on the May primary election ballot. The county is in the middle of a search for a permanent full-time manager, as well as discussing a many, the current form of government, and/or starting with the brand-new Government Study Commission. Much uncertainty remains as Luzern County works through these decisions and processes. However, I have tried to be the calm and steady presence in the midst of Luzern County's uncertainty. Luzern County lessons learned. In two thousand and thirteen, Luzern County had negative fund balance, so that if we were a private entity, there would be going concerns, and it would be talked about just how we keep the doors open. At that time, the county worked with Pennsylvania Economy League, and subsequently, public financial management to come up with our first five-year plan. The majority of the five-year plan was funded by state dollars due to the county's poor credit rating at that time. Actually, none. At the time, the county couldn't fathom a fund balance or respectable credit rating. At that time, the primary goal was to improve cash receipts and streamline processes. Fast forward ten years, Luzern County immediate needs remain the same. Increased revenue and leveling, or were possible, reducing expenses. However, the county is in a much better financial position. The county, up until today, enjoyed a standard and poor's A-minus credit rating. I was told today that the county was upgraded one notch to an A- credit rating. The county needs to maintain and/or possibly improve our credit rating. How? This was written, obviously, before that meeting. Simple. Plan your work and work your plan, taking that one step further, improve your plan. In two thousand and twenty-three, this seems counterintuitive to society at large, as residents, as well as our own families, want immediate results. A long-term approach, while much slower, is ultimately more sustainable and needs to be planned out. During my two terms as acting manager, five union contracts were negotiated in two thousand and twenty-two, with an additional contract signed earlier this year. The county's tax base is stable with development from Hanover Township to Hazelton City, either planned or happening at a rapid pace. The county audits have been completed on time and primarily unamortified in the past few years. What has been the secret formula? Simple. It was done with a team-oriented approach, where the Luzern County Council Administration and subject magic matter experts worked together. They came up with a plan and worked together. This was not one side against another. This was everyone working together for the common goal, improving Luzern County. In closing, in my first division head report, agenda item one was one county. We're all one county. We have one tax ID member, and even though we have differences, we are all trying to move the county forward. No one person or group of individuals will have the magic solution to the current or future problems, regardless of their educational background and their life experiences. Luzern County will only realize its true potential when ideas are implemented, regardless of the source, to move the county forward. Thank you.
I'd like to make one comment on that. Thanks very much, Mr. Swet. Great. We love to hear some of the things that one of the county engineers here that we have a credit rating increase today. This is amazing. You know, after all that we've been through the last decade or so, we're really, you know, no matter what happens here in this room sometimes, and, you know, some of the turnover that we have in our administration, no matter with all of that, we know that we're generally on the right track. Especially when it comes to financially, these are the things that we're working towards, and these are the things that we have to just keep doing until we get out of this situation that we're in. Because once we are, there's no telling what we'll be able to do with that extra money. And I think that we're really close. We can see the line at the end of tunnel, and that's a great example of that. Another good example of why, you know, some of these good things are happening is seeing that Luzern County's tax base is growing. It was just a report in Times later this past weekend about the same thing. And we should all be really proud of that, because, again, although we have our challenges, people recognize that Luzern County is sort of the epicenter where growth is happening in Pennsylvania, especially northeast Pennsylvania. And we have a lot of work to do, but we're on the right track.
Chair. But I just want to publicly thank Mr. Swet for taking on the job when it was vacant a few months ago. And I think he did a good job so far, and it's a bear, a bear of a job. And, but thank you for stepping.
Thank you.
Mr. Lombardi.
Go ahead.
You know, I agree, the report was very good. But you got to remember, the reason with the financial situation particularly was council. Went all the way back twelve years ago. We knew what we were faced with, and we knew what we had to do. And there were some trying times. But council steadfast on that, and you see what the result is today. It took eleven years. We didn't have a credit rating. We had to go out to borrow in the beginning. We had to go out and get a third party to do the borrowing. To come all the way up to where we are today is amazing feat. But councils and previous councils deserve a lot of credit for that.
Thank you, Mr. McGinn. Anybody else? Budget reports?
I don't know if Mr. Del Sandro's on the line. If not, I'll do it.
Uh, Mr. Del Sandro, are you here?
If not, I'll just go through it.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yep. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So attached in tonight's packet is the January budget report and financials. Obviously, being the January report, there's not a ton of data to really dig into yet. The one thing I wanted to bring to council's attention, earlier this month, we decided to move a good portion of our general fund into a money market account, where we're going to be accruing about three point five percent over the next twelve months, or as long as we leave the money in that account. So again, our intent is to leave that money in as long as possible until we need to start making some transfers for our operating expenses. So that was really the one thing I wanted to bring to council's attention. Obviously, if there's any questions on the monthly report, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions? Alright, thank you very much. Next, we have discussion regarding the lease with McCarthy Realty Incorporated for property located at ninety-three to ninety-seven North State Street, Wolf's Berry. Any discussion? Alright. Now we have discussion regarding the ARPA grants. Mr. Mitchell, I know that one of the hot topics of this meeting has been your proposal. It's been reported on in the paper a little bit, so if you would like to expand upon it a little bit, that would be, that would be great.
Sure. We think that what Mr. Thorin said, I think this is the only thing I came up with. He pointed out that scoring, we had some issues with the portal by the application we're missing. So I try to just look at, I put that on the side. This is just one idea that I came up with. Maybe a starting point, because I think counties have been sitting on this money for too long. And I just want to have a cool discussion for it and take as much controversy out of it as I could. So I just, I'm putting it into four different groups that would have biggest impact on the county as a whole. So like, we have, I put two million dollars for municipalities. My thought process was municipal services affect most county residents. Their projects are very important, especially emergency services and infrastructure that they have to get. So from that, so that was really my thought process from two million dot five hundred thousand. What has the biggest impact for the county at large? And I was also trying to stay under the sixty million dollar threshold that council had already established. So when I printed some numbers, I saw that use these brackets, so to say, fully fund eighty-four percent of all eligible projects. I thought that was pretty good, you know, that's just to get the discussion going. You know, that list that I, that's another, I know, you know, I was trying to stay on pick and winners. So that's why I just had every eligible application that sold at a turn.
Go ahead, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, with some of these, again, you know, any discussion right now is welcome. And we're sitting here not knowing what to do, so again, thank you for doing that. We need to discuss it. We need to speed it up so that we can make a decision. The only thing is, with any of the projects, if their budget is more than this, then they're not going to be able to complete the project. Therefore, they wouldn't be able to accept the money, correct? So we'd have to have them submit a new budget?
Correct. That was quite fun.
A revised budget.
A revised budget.
With a revised narrative.
How do we, how do we plan on doing that? Is that something that we're going to do?
I was, I was
To do a budget. Okay, so then there are some, but there are some projects, you know, that definitely fit into the ARPA guidelines and may not be able to, to do it. So something, for instance, with the stormwater, you know, there's one project that's like one point two million, they wouldn't be able to do it. Again, that's picking and choosing at this point, because we know what the projects are. It's just a worthy project, and I would hate to see something like that go by the wayside. I don't know how much longer the process will take to have some, you know, everybody, is that in this case, everybody or just the ones that would not fall under the grant, I guess? Like only the ones that wouldn't fall under getting the, their amount of money would have to give budget, or should everybody give the budget?
Well, I don't think once it'll be fully funded, we'll have to do that budget, because we already got that information. But another project, maybe they could do it.
Yeah, we need you to speak up. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's very old, the tech going.
I know, it doesn't.
So if an applicant can do their project in another phase of their project, I know what some infrastructure is done in phases. That's one possibility. But, you know, again, just trying to get the conversation moving here, you know, if any other customer.
And again, all of us, you know, and I believe Mr. McKinley said it, and Mr. Thornton, none of this money has been awarded, granted, it's in a eligible, and it was scored, and it falls under that category of being eligible, but nothing has been voted on. I think this unfortunately is a no-win situation. We're not gonna, we can't please everybody. We haven't made a decision yet. We're trying to discuss it. But looking back, I think even when Booth originally said, what's the score? What score do you want to give? We just picked a score. We didn't even know what the questions were at that time. Questions are very broad, very general. And it was hard to know anything, you know, looking back. Now hindsight is 2020. But here we are. We've got to try to move forward. We've got to discuss it, try to make the best decision. Not everybody's going to be happy. That includes council. They need six votes to pass that, and who knows?
Yeah, just real quick, to your points, we have a starting list. Every applicant on there that we're proposing may be reduced in the dollar amount of the grant, has to have an opportunity to reply to us whether or not they could use that money or not. And for instance, if they're, they were proposing to spend $400,000 on a new sewer project that went for 4,000 feet, maybe they'll take half of $400,000 to take the $200,000, and instead of doing 4,000 feet, they do 2,000 feet of sewers. And then that's how sewers work. You're doing it in phases, and when you get the money, you do the other phase.
Right.
And then the next one. So, but we do have to reach out to everyone in some manner or fashion and give them an opportunity to respond with, with whatever we're proposing.
If we decide to go that route.
If we decide to.
We don't even know if we're going to go that route.
Okay, so I applaud Matt 100%. I mean, this is the way, it seems that this is how we get stuff moving, how we start to talk about it. So it's fantastic. The only thing that I would want to look into a little bit more is the time. So if we do this, will it take a little bit? I mean, I have to imagine it's going to take a little bit longer to get the.
To get the money out.
Yeah.
Just people have to go through and screen the revised project summaries again.
Would we set some type of a timetable to get these updated? My whole concern is, I believe Councilman Thornton said, we're between a rock and a hard place. I feel like we've been here for a while. I think it's time to rip the band-aid off. I really do. I mean, one way or the other, this, we have to do something with this money and move on, because I think a lot of us are looking to give some of what we have left to qualified seniors, and that's something that's being held up because of this. Whatever we do, I would just like to, let's chart a course and let's go, because it is, it's painful. It feels like it's dragging on me. So we are going to do this. I think we should make up our minds and reach out to these individuals, because I have to imagine we can't start handing out a lower amount until we have some answers from them, correct? So.
And if we're going to throw back to Booth, are we going to pay him another $350,000?
I mean, that is a concern.
That's a conversation I think we would need to have with Ms. Booth, especially considering, this is one point that I was going to bring up. I was going to scavenge all the other point. That had we not missed these five projects, I think that we may not be in this situation right now. You know, we had a number of issues throughout the process that we attempted to have address. All of it was done very publicly. There were a lot of questions asked, and they just basically said, you know, stay the course, keep doing what you're doing, and basically figure it out at the end. And, but when we get to the end, we, not that we don't like the result, it was, it was more that we, there were projects that were not included. So, you know, a lot of us took issue with that, and I, barely so. I think that's a problem. And if we did just go with that list, including those five projects, the list would probably be changed somewhat significantly, knocking out some of those lower, lower funded projects, and those lower-end projects. Not to say that they were less deserving, but they, just for the amount of money that some of these, some of these projects were being, you know, asking for. So again, you know, this is just a situation that we're in, not necessarily very far tomorrow, but we would like to be able to fix it. So, sure, let's get it going.
So I guess the best way I could describe this process from Booth is imagine being at home and you know your sewer is starting to block the basement. And you know it's blocking, you just keep going in, you flush your toilet, flush the toilets again. Then by about the fifth time, guess what happens? It all flows on your floor. So this whole process wasn't going to get any better, it works. I know personally, because I seem to have the most trouble, and I don't know why, other than I was required to fill out a privacy policy, which I did right at the beginning. So I scored the first pool, the second pool, and on the third pool, I don't get it. Reach out, well, because you didn't sign the privacy policy. I most certainly did. So I tried viciously to send it, send it, had other people send it before I finally had Mr. Swett send it. They kept playing it in again. So, I'll be honest with me, I'm watching in our email chain of all of us. I got my pool, I received my pool. So I sit back and wait. Once again, I don't get mine. So I was left out of three pools. I, on the last one, was scoring it and got knocked right out four hours before it was supposed to end. And I'm sorry, but like Mr. Thornton said before, I have a full-time job. So when I get the opportunity, and it might be on a Sunday afternoon, sitting in my recliner, that's when I scored it. And here I am with four hours left to finish. I'm six deep and I get kicked out. So that particular time, I called Mr. Thornton, I said, guess what happened to me? And surprisingly enough, he turns to me and he says, well, tells me on the phone, he said, just happened to me. It's like, this isn't like, it really is. I know this don't make any of you guys feel better, but the problem is, this process was flawed in so many different ways. And now for us to just award these things based on, I know my scores could have possibly changed a lot of scores. Those things I was strongly in favor of. Those things I strongly against. My score never counted a lot of these projects. So what do we do going forward? We either have public hearings, speak openly about every single one of them, and just get through them? Maybe that's the right way to do it? Rule out the ones that are not eligible, which is a bunch. We can turn around and you take Homestead exclusion, and you can give every resident who, by the way, I think every resident in this county, I'm talking every individual, was affected by COVID. So maybe you give them $500 each, and that's $62 million, and that's, but whatever's left for me to buy that. I really don't know what the right answer is. I really don't. But I do think, and I said this from day one, if we took that path in the beginning, that would have reached every single person in the county. I know every single person's been affected by inflation, rising heating costs, electric bills, all of that. And again, that's only my opinion. I wish I had the right answer. I have to fix this in five minutes, but I don't think we could fix it. I think part of the reason we're in this, because we were in kind of a hurry to get the money out for people. And I think it's made waste in this regard. And if I had to do it all over again, I would still need to slow down and take a deep breath. But we were, you hear where we're at. I applaud you for taking the time to do that spreadsheet. That was a lot of work. But again, I'm going to publicly say, I will never, ever sit here and vote to give a dollar to a school district. It seems like every time there's a raise, and again, and, and once again, I have nothing against a school district. My daughter is a school teacher in New York City, so I get it. But I will tell you this, they have a budget, and every single time, taxes are lumped together to get the biggest cut. And all you hear is, you guys raised my taxes to the roof. No, it's in three parcels. It's the municipality, it's the county, it's the school. You're going to take a harder, it's most of it, usually it's the school. So, you know, with that being said, there's projects I will personally never give to. Another one that really hurt me when I read it, literally, one for a quarter of a million, one for a half million. I'm sorry, but you know what? My kids played everything from T-ball up to high school. My son and daughter, we got together on the Sunday. We volunteered our time. We took care of the fields. We cut the grass. We put the infield mix in. We got donations to buy the infield mix. Matter of fact, you know what happened? Wyoming Gary High School couldn't afford a school board. We got together as parents, because we were embarrassed that the kids went out on the field, didn't have a scoreboard, nice school ball. We did fundraisers, fundraisers, we got $6 million raised. We drove to Conduction, picked up a scoreboard, bought it brand new, got in-kind help, put it up at no cost to the school district. There are things sometimes you got to do when there just isn't money available. And I like to, I wish we could sit here and give $2 million to every business, every organization. It'd be great. But this isn't, you told you, we don't know that. There's always going to be pollution, and garbage, and crime. But I just hope we can move forward, somewhat try to keep everybody happy, and come up with a solution that everybody shares in the voice. That's, because I think that's why, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Turner?
Not, not to beat, beat the dead horse here, but I'm going to beat the dead horse. I mean, I recall going back, and I stated back last year that we had to decide on percentages and buckets. I think I remember that conversation. I, all my colleagues, I mentioned that we need to figure out what percentage, and then what of the five main buckets are we going to put the money into? At that point, you know, that should have probably turned some people's light bulbs on and said, let's put a cap on the amount of money that a business could, could get and receive. And we did not do that as a council. So we go out and put out a process. We changed the process so only one entity should be able to get that money or receive money. I had, you know, throughout the process, there were some questions that did pop up when I started looking to some of these businesses and some of the organizations. And I mean, are all of them really legitimately here in Luzerne County, too? I had posed a question to Booth. I still haven't, you know, really ascertained an answer. I mean, I sent a LinkedIn, well, hyperlink to Booth for one of the entities where the individual that was part of the organization didn't even live in Luzerne County. So if you're going to pay some people on the administrative staff, some of these organizations, I think they should live here in Luzerne County and not live in Colorado or live in Philadelphia. So I guess one of the bigger questions, and maybe we need to ask this, is because we hired Booth management, do we own the information that, do we own these applications?
We will get, my understanding is, we're going to get all the information at the end. But I think regardless, if you start over, move forward, that at the end, it's going to be.
Well, I mean. I mean, if it's subjected to a freedom of information act like Ms. Booth had stated a week ago, I think all that information should be, A, put on the website immediately, publicized. You know, if we're going to make a decision on it, there's no reason to hide the information at this point in time. You know, the confidentiality was only when we were doing scoring, and then that process is over. I would not be confident or comfortable voting on some of these, knowing that I still would have to go back and look at some of the administrative costs of some of these businesses to see where this money is going. You know, I don't mind if it's a Luzerne County entity, and all the employees are within Luzerne County. But if some of the employees are out of the state or out of this county, I have a problem with that. And I will not support any, any vote on, on those entities. And I know one of them, you know, asked for more than a million bucks. So, and two of the people that were, that I looked up were not in state. They happened to change their website, so the Board of Directors are no longer, those two members are, are on that website. Just happens to be that they, they all are now Luzerne County people as Board of Directors, but the people that are actually in the application are not. So, so during the process, I guess more questions have popped up. The other thing is, is if this is tied into COVID, and we're looking at 990s for nonprofits, maybe we should be allowed to ask the businesses to see their tax documents from the last couple of years. And if none of it would be publicly disclosed, obviously, because it's private. But if some of these businesses claim that you lost revenue, prove it.
Those were probably the application.
Right. Right, okay. Yeah, but I mean, I'm talking about three years' worth of documents, not just one or two, because we can't get much off of just one year's information, you know? I'd like to see histories, you know? Just to be fair, I mean, because 990s are pretty much public. Other than that, I mean, first, some of the municipal projects, if they have to deal with economic development, and they can tie them into COVID, I would not be a proponent of reducing the amounts at all. You know, some of them are very worthy. Some of them are eyesores. If they have to deal with blight, which is a, a, an actual acceptable use, I think that needs to be remedied immediately. You know, it has to deal with the reflection of our community. And overall, I don't know where we go from here, besides, you know, if we had this many problems, I think we should just start over. I mean, it's, it's hard work, but I think, you know, I think if we did start over, we could probably have a quicker timeline, since we already know who the applicants are. And, and I also had people call me and email me that were previous applicants in the, in the first round, that did not apply the second time, because they didn't even know that we were doing this the second time around. And they missed the application deadline. Or we failed to, when they reached out by email, they were never responded to by email, which was unfair to them, too. I had a business in Hazelton and a business in Wilkes-Barre that wanted to apply, that were not able to apply, because they had questions and answers that were never really answered. So. What's that?
First, you said you don't want to do it, not even do one.
Do what? I don't have a problem starting over.
All right, sir.
Yeah, that might be everybody else. I also mentioned before, I don't have a problem starting over. We have to go down that road, to be fair. You know? But we have to make the process fair.
All right, any other comments, Mr. Wolliver?
Just real quick, I mean, from the beginning, we did set a process. We went through, we fixed five applications. I think this is the process we started. We should just vote it up or down with the new list, make the adjustments. Six of us say it's fine, we should move forward. Six of us say it's not fine, then we have to reevaluate.
That's a question, then. Does Booth, did Booth give us a new score?
Ms. Booth, are you on with us?
Yeah, yes, I'm on.
Do you want to respond to any of what's been said? Also, another question that we had is, do you, do we have an updated list with these new, the five projects that were scored originally?
We're scoring them now. You'll get it tomorrow. We'll release it tomorrow. I guess I just wanted to remind everybody kind of the process. You all had training. We went over all the evaluation questions during training, one by one, by one, by one, with everybody there. I do understand about the concern relative to the portal. We could go back and forth with emails suggesting that we would get a notification when you all accessed your emails. Some people, we never accessed the link. Some people, we never saw any, even an attempt to access a link. So that's when, if you notice, this time I really reached out. I went, I, it was Sunday night, and I was letting people have access, because if there was any issue. So I do those five applications. To this day, I've asked my IT what happened. It just boggles my mind with those five last applications. But I just want to really remind you, we caution that this could be the, the, the concern when you evaluate awards. But it's not uncommon, even at the federal level, for there to be, that you don't receive everything you asked for. I, I have to say that, because I think some of the applicants thought they would get 100%. And I understand the concern about, well, they can't finish the project. I've looked at thousands of federal awards. They never give them what they asked for, and they do ask them for a revised budget to match in a timeline. The thing that the clock is ticking on for you all is 12:31, 2024. It's around the corner. And some of these projects, even as the time continues, they won't be able to get them done. So they may have to, you know, carve out the phases to hopefully get them done. So while we, I strongly apologize for the glitches in the portal. I, I do think that we try to communicate or to be available to respond to. We've gotten a lot of questions, a lot of calls, a lot of inquiries, and we'll continue to do so. So with that said, the, you all have, you all have the authority as a council, as you know, to change your process. You have the authority to, to make different decisions. One of the things that I will say, none of this was a waste of time, because every document, every piece of paper that they had to submit, you have to have in your project files. So if you make a decision on award or a non-award, you have complete project files. So that, you would have to have that anyway with any award that you made through this no-fee. And that, and that's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much all that I have to say. Did I answer your question?
I, I believe so. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead. We have another, another question.
I, if we were to ask for a revised budget, I don't know at this point which way we're going to go. We're going to. um, I don't know at this point which way we're gonna go. We're gonna stay with our list or maybe, you know, branch off onto Mr. Mitchell's suggestion. Uh, how long would it take, do you think, to get a revised budget? Uh, or what kind of a timeline do you think we could realistically put on that?
And you can up, we could, we had no problems with the applications. We could make the, we could put the app, not the entire application, but for them to just submit their budgets. We, you need a revised timeline as well and potentially a revised scope. Because if the scope is gonna change based on a budget, you still wanna know it's within scope and it's within the timeline for these monies to be obligated. That could be up and running tomorrow. You can give them two to three business days. And whether you wanted us to review them or you all to review them, they would just have that time period to go and go back into the, it's the original application portal, but it would just be asking for the budget, scope, and timeline. Based on whatever you approved as the award amount.
I know we did have one or two projects, didn't we, that were quite high and they said that they could possibly get away with a lesser amount?
There's, there were a number of applicants who contacted me, I'm sure, same as everybody else that had said something to that effect.
So that's something we have to, we have to make a decision what we wanna do. I, I'm not in favor of starting over. Um, tweaking what, what we have is probably the best way. It's just, you know.
Any other, yeah. Any other questions or comments on this? Ms. Beatz, like just wait till public comment, that's okay.
Like as an applicant, you cannot see the budget.
Right. They'll, they'll, yeah, that you'll be given access to that, I suppose, if we, if we, any other discussion from council?
Regarding this or just your Ms. Booth?
Just regarding this at all, yeah.
My, well, I, I, I think we need to put a timeline on it for ourselves. I mean, we're talking about tonight. I did ask for a special meeting on this. I mean, we gotta keep this moving. When, when we do our budget, we do it every week. So not that I wanna have a meeting every week, but maybe that would encourage.
We did give a couple of options for a special meeting. Is everybody okay with, um, the seventh? Is that okay?
I mean, if we keep it, if we keep it on the.
Yeah, is there anything on the seventh?
Nobody wants to meet every week, but if, if that's what it takes, you know?
Maybe we should meet twice a week.
Somebody will start making decisions.
It's gonna be a work session.
Yeah, it'll be a work session. It'll be a work session regarding ARP.
We gotta make a decision.
If that's the case, and, you know, people have thoughts or comments, they should submit them before we come here. So everybody has a chance to look at them. So maybe come up with a process. Everybody's satisfied. If we wait till, till next Tuesday night to have this kind of discussion again, that's what it's gonna be. It's kind of a discussion, you know? And we're not gonna come up with a, a decision. So.
Set it to a vote.
Well, please get a process and then go ahead and apply the process. As Mr. Wolowitz said.
Is everyone okay with six PM, seven?
March seventh.
Five, alright, five, yeah. Everybody else, if everybody can make it five, alright, time clock.
Earlier better. Eventually, though, we all have to vote on which way we wanna go. So that vote needs to come up fairly quickly.
Sooner rather than later.
Right, yeah.
Just so, before we vote on it, actually we have all the loose ends tied up so that we don't vote and they go, oh, you know, we should have done that, should have done that. Again, we have to give time to every entity to come back to us and say, no, I can't do the project on that. Forget it. Or yes, I could do something with that, but we can't vote on giving the money if they can't do the project though.
And what if they say they can't do it?
They gotta know what they're funding.
Well, we have a list, right?
That you're prepared well.
That's, that's just a.
That's just the first, first draft.
Well, and the problem with that list is, we said from day one, each municipality city would only get one. There's multiple on there.
Yeah.
They gotta get taken right out of it, so.
Maybe I just wanna stay with the original list, though. Maybe we just wanna, you know, go back and ask everybody for a new budget on the original list. We already said no duplicate, no duplicates, those five, uh, which we have to see the brand new list anyway, the eligible list, because now we have five new scores in there. So I guess we really need to see that tomorrow before we can.
Ms. Booth said that, that will happen tomorrow.
Yeah.
See, you know, the other flaw I saw in this whole process was, and, and trust me when I tell you, I live in West Coast and so does Brian. I was not in favor of giving eleven million dollars for flood protection. I may have considered a couple of million to get it off the ground. But when they were scored, they moved on to the next because they asked for eleven million. So they got zero because there wasn't enough funding. Well, that's not fair because they were next in line for the funding. So I think that was a major flaw of this process still because nothing would have stopped someone from even asking for fifty million and this score would have went haywire and they would have got it. And guess what? It would have left twelve million dollars for ten.
Again, hindsight is twenty twenty. I wish, we wish.
Yeah, but we were aware that if somebody scored, there wasn't enough money left, that they're just gonna get kicked out of it.
Yeah, we never talked about that.
We never, we weren't even told that. Like, that's, that's bizarre because.
If you get down to number, let's say it was seventy-five entities and you get down to number seventy-four, and let's say that Dyke Levy project qualified with our scoring process. But they said, oh, but there's only a million dollars left for this last two. So they throw the Dyke project out even though they qualified because there's not eleven million left. So we never talked about that either. Like, I see where that could be a flaw.
That's a major flaw, in my opinion, because I don't see how that's fair.
They qualified, but they don't get any qualified, which they did. And I think that really happened.
I think the right thing would have did was they should have said, hey, we're gonna check with this organization and there's three, are you okay with three somehow, three of those?
Then maybe, maybe the best thing is to have everybody resubmit a budget. I mean, still deal with the eligible ones, but that may open up, uh, more money in the pool if we have a large project, say, well, you don't need all that money. That would open it up to a lot more organizations.
Any other comments from council members? Sir, just wait till public comment, please.
As long as we have another meeting.
March seventh, five PM.
Five o'clock next Tuesday.
Alright, there's no other discussion. Uh, we'll have a discussion regarding the resolution depositing one hundred nine thousand six hundred one dollars and ninety-eight cents into the reserve fund. Mr. McGinnly.
Well, I think everybody's fully aware of that special last year. She was a successful person. And we let her pay for all the expenses. And his application base for the state, that's what they paid, Glendale County, for nine thousand six hundred and one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Since that's all been done, the budget for last year is complete. And we know that our reserve fund is.
Completed.
Well, it's not completed, but very minimal.
Yes.
I think this is money that we should put in reserve. Number one, that means it's in the reserve, which means any action would require council action. You wanna dedicate and apply to that project of emergency or whatever it might be. Just like I say, it's in reserve. And I think we have, what, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in reserve. Very minimal when you talk about, I don't know, a $10 budget. That's why I asked for that.
I could not agree with this anymore. I, uh, that killed me cutting it during the budget season. I know you indicated then we were going to refill it. So this is great. Refill it. I mean, it's, it's our savings account. So you don't want that to be empty, especially when you're telling people if they need money, come to us. You know, it's, it's important that we keep some money in there and, uh, the budget did put a hurt on it. So, well done.
I think, uh, can we, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
By, by the way, not a splash fund, right? That's, that's a savings account.
The reserve fund, uh, when we did the budget back in the fall, back in November, November or December, in order to lessen or not raise taxes.
As much.
As much, we took, I think, five hundred thousand?
I think it's more.
More?
All together.
Well, we cut it all the way back to two hundred and forty-five thousand.
How much did we move out of there to?
Quite a bit.
I think like eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred grand maybe to plug the budget.
Part of the awkward money, just put in the roads, a million dollars.
Yes. So we took a lot of money out of that reserve fund, which the word reserve means we're supposed to reserve. So I, I think it's just what I did, I replenished it every step of the way.
Great.
Any other discussion?
Good. I think there was fifty-seven thousand from that redevelopment authority sale. We put that into that fund too, since it's found.
Yeah. What is it? As long as it wasn't, as long as it wasn't taken out of general fund, we're all looking, again, it's general fund money being on there.
Any other discussion? Alright, discussion regarding proposals for county-owned properties.
And we have these four packets, go through our real estate committee meeting a couple of weeks ago and the committee recommended them on to council. The first one is for Mr. John Maltz, which is in Dallas Township. Uh, it's a small lot. It's not buildable. It's not big enough to be built on in Dallas, um, in the Dallas Township area. Um, he does own four parcels around it, though. He's interested in purchasing that just to be able to have, you know, more of its property. Um, building would be a challenge for anyone else because of the setback requirements and having room for a well and septic, and that may not be possible. Does anybody have a question on the first one? If you go through there and see the maps and tax card information. If no one has a question on that, then the next one is the redevelopment authority at the city of Pittston. And this is, uh, the property right by the Pittston Hospital. Uh, the agency now owns four parcels to the west and three parcels to the east of the parcel for which they bid so. They desire, um, to make ownership or purchase this to make that property a little bit bigger. Um, as a municipal property, it would remain off the tax rule. So that's the negative part of it. Uh, but what I did talk with Mr. Mayor Lombardo the other day, he did say that they're looking to put some, um, homes there. Uh, what did he say? Like townhomes?
Condominiums or something inside the building or around it.
You know, to help with, um, housing increases in Luzerne County and better for Pittston City as well. Does anybody have any questions about that one? Oh, that's right. You're right. Off the tax rules. I did just say that, yes. Yes, you are correct. Well, it does, um, produce more housing, which is needed in Luzerne County. Any questions about that?
That would narrow it to be favorable to that a hundred percent, except for I would want to have to down the road, give out any tax breaks.
Well, again, it's not, oh, the city of Pittston in general.
Yeah, in other words, yeah, like a tip or something where they turn around and say, hey, for the next ten years, you're not gonna receive any taxes on it.
Well, hopefully this.
We gave you the land.
Yeah.
That's what I mean. We're, we're gonna fast forward here. So hopefully return to the, just the tax dollars.
Absolutely. Uh, the next one is Jeffrey Cobal and this is Hanover Township. This parcel is just a small parcel around his property. He's just looking to purchase it. And, um, point zero eight three acres. Just wanna make the point of that. That's a very small parcel. Um, and then the next one is Gerald Hildebrand and this is Locum Township. Uh, this parcel is, um, appears, this whole big parcel, this one actually, it's a bunch of parcels under one pin number. So there's a little bit more work that's gonna have to go into this before I think we even approve the sale of it. Um, I have to go back to Mr. Hildebrand about it, but there's a bunch of sporadic parcels and he's looking to purchase, um, a couple of the, the parcels and it's a minimum of two acres to build there. Uh, it would have to pass a perk test. There's no shore. There's no water, no gas. Um, he doesn't live near it right now, but maybe to look into building in the future. Um, but again, I think we have to go back to, actually, I think he's gonna have to probably try to subdivide it if he's interested because it's quite a few parcels under one pin number. And I think that's what he's keen to do before we actually go ahead with it. So I think that's gonna be a little bit more work on his part if he's interested in purchasing.
Any questions?
I have a comment. I just wanna say thanks, Lian, for doing all this. You know, I appreciate it very much.
Trying, trying to get some of the property sold off of our, of our liability books and, um, hopefully be able to have people purchase and build properties.
Thank you for making sure that we have pictures of it as well and, uh, the actual picture of, of the, the land, like the actual land itself, not just the satellite view. That's pretty, pretty cool.
Well, if you have any questions, um, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it, but, you know, we should put it on the voting session next time or not.
Any other discussion? Alright, we will move into public comment on the work session. Uh, Mr. Griffin?
Uh, council, uh, citizens, Greg Griffin Swarfield. Washington intended to one hundred and twelve million ARP funds that, that Luzerne County got, approximately one hundred and twelve millions to also help the individual citizens affected financially by COVID. So so many individual citizens watching the whole process are a little bit nervous when they see one organization's going to get fifteen million, another organization, six million, another organization, five million, three million, three million, two point five, one point eight, one point five, one point two, one. And there's been no discussion about helping the individual citizen who was adversely affected by COVID. And it, I did hear some, a little good news about maybe seniors and so good for you. Count, it sounds like council, you know, is, is trying to figure a way through this. Uh, we, council did increase the taxes by a majority vote, uh, on the senior citizens, uh, and they couldn't pay their taxes before this adequately. So any help you could give the seniors or, uh, or working families that are eligible. Now, half Luzerne County is not eligible. So it's not like it's a giant sponge gonna suck all the money out. So, and they're gonna have to apply. Uh, a newspaper ad or whatever. So, uh, Mayor Brown said he was surprised that, uh, there was a lot of citizens didn't apply for his ARP funds that were eligible. So I would just say, look, offer something, a certain pot and see if they apply for it. At least you offered something besides the, the thirteen, fifteen million or whatever. And, and you've done the best you could. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Ms. Hartman?
One of the things, Ms. Hartman, Hanover Township, Elizabeth Hartman, um, one of the things that was brought up was the flood authority and what they were asking for in the ARP money. I was just at a flood authority meeting the other day. Um, the only member of the public that was there, they seemed shocked that there was somebody there from the public, but I'm gonna hit every meeting that I can possibly hit until I fix the county. Um, so they read their budget and I'm sure it was in the Times later because, um, Ms. Lawrence was there. Um, what they have in their budget now and they have, I believe it was forty-three, I say like, like, they have big bucks. Like, I don't know what they're applying for our money for. Like, they, like, somehow we need to see what these people have in their, in their coffers right now. Why do they need that? Now, I asked them about the, like, what are we doing for flood protection? Because we all know that Wyoming Valley is gonna flood again. It is. No matter what we do with our levy system, whatever we wanna call our levy system, my family's been here since seventeen forty-nine. We have floods all the time. We missed the last one by what we say an inch of the sneeze and we just approved, you guys just approved to add Durie in. Durie is gonna push more water down into the valley. We're not gonna have that inch of the, the sneeze. I understand they don't wanna dredge the river because they're afraid of a Knox Mine disaster happening again. There's islands out on the river. We can go out there, have Greg's team find out who owns the islands because they're publicly, privately owned islands supposedly and clear the debris off the islands or get some of the trees off the islands so that that gives us some more room for water when it's coming. Like, somebody think out of the box here. Um, um, to get off that subject, a friend of mine, um, a few years ago committed suicide and a few months ago in this chamber, council voted to give the family a settlement. The settlement was the Hunter family. She worked for children and youth. She committed suicide and the funding was ten thousand dollars. And that ten thousand dollars was supposed to be used. The family didn't want that money. They wanted that money used to produce a video on bullying and LGBT issues and it was voted on by council that it would be done within thirty. on bullying and LGBT issues, and it was voted on by council that it would be done within thirty days. And I want to know if that video was produced, who produced it, and if every county member saw that video. So in your ordinance that you passed, you passed that ten thousand dollars video is going to be produced, and all county employees would be trained on that video, I'd also like that video added to the county website. I'd like to know how, and I'm not going to stop, so I'd like to know how I get a hold of, you can, you can have a sheriff take me out. I want to know how I get a hold of the sheriff. I want to know how I get a hold of the sheriff's office, the head sheriff, so that I can find out lack of serving of PFAs warrants. So I filed a PFA service warrant on a Friday evening, they weren't, served that warrant until they came here, in here. That's the second time in six years that the sheriff's office has failed to do their job. So I want to know how I get a hold of them.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman.
And then the next is, I want to know how I get a hold of the senior.
Ms. Hartman.
The senior judge. Under nine oh three, under nine oh three, a public speaking, it's an ordinance, I can see.
Please sit down, Ms. Hartman.
They can take me out if they want to take me out.
We're trying to be fair.
Somebody can record me being taken out.
If you're going to be like that, then we're going to have a sheriff.
I want to know who the senior judges that I can meet with.
Please sit down. Please.
I want to.
We're being fair to you.
I want to know the senior judge that I can speak to to find out when Judge Salavantis will be back from her maternity leave, because my family court case is on hold because she is on maternity leave.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nap.
Council Chair Lombardo Ron Knapp. First of all, Mr. Liv Kevich, I've always, when I send an important email out, I blind copy myself when I send the email out. So that way, when I receive the email that I sent, I receive it myself, so that's an indicator that whoever you were sending that mail to should have received that email. That's my perception as you tried to communicate, and it was, it was lackluster in, in fashion. That's, that's how I handle something of importance, and also ask for confirmation receipt. I, I wanted to mention about the ARP money, I mentioned this before. It was one hundred and thirteen million dollars just under that we are allotted, and the first allocations went to children, youth, in, information technology upgrade through acting manager Croco. Yeah, I did bring that up, and, and that, those funds were properly allocated for, for that facility. That, because our, our youth are, are future. I bring it to the floor now to bring some of the ARP money, to bring this room up to twenty-first century technology. We do not need to be asking people to, to speak up. We should have the appropriate technological advances, all this paper, all this toner, laptops being used, that, that dropdown and, and a projector and sharing screen, so that everybody in this room sees this post, all this paper and all this, this toner being used. It's important also to mention Acting Manager Sweats compliment, everybody was tooting their horn, council did a good job, we just moved up in the A-plus status. Well, guess what? The people standing here at this podium, holding you to the, to the fire, deserve credit also with that. The people that run for office, so that you don't become in a, in a position where you, you don't think you're going to be challenged. Well, those people that stand here to challenge you in the election process, hold you to the cap, to, to the fire, so that we get dynamite action from the council body. We deserve an applause, every one of us in this room deserves an applause. You challenge council, okay, and getting involved. That can't be emphasized enough. I think I've had my say.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp, anybody else in public comment in the room?
Is Ms., is Ms. Booth still on the phone?
Uh, that I do not know.
Yes.
Ms. Booth, you had three classes on how to fill out these applications, right?
It wasn't three.
Well, you had classes to fill them out, right?
Sir, you're, you're not supposed to address a single person during public.
I am so sorry, I'll be quiet.
No, that's okay, Ms. Booth, go ahead, finish, just, you can finish your thought, I guess.
Well, when you said that you didn't have time to do it, and you had another job, which there's sixty million on the line, she had classes to fill out these things, the same thing with you. You said that there was glitches, and guess what, I made mistakes too. So I'm not saying that I'm perfect, but I didn't wait till the last minute to do these things, just so you know.
Sir, all due respect, some of them I couldn't even get on.
Yeah, but guess what, I made mistakes too. I'm telling you, I made mistakes where they had to contact me and say, hey, you made a mistake. And I made two or three mistakes, but the point is I didn't wait till the last minute, you know? And as far as starting the process over, I'd like to say thank you, because I do believe you're trying to get this over with, and I do believe you are too. But as far as you're, but you're going to create a monster by starting this over. And I know you guys don't want to take a cut, but if you just cut it and say ninety percent or eighty-five percent, whatever you guys want to do, that's cool. But to just contact a hundred and fifty people and say, hey, we need you to redo your budget, instead of just saying, hey, we can only fund ninety percent or eighty-five percent, because he had problems in the portal already. He had problems, I had problems, I'm sure everybody else did. So what you're going to do is you're going to create a problem and say, we're going to do this in one week, and it's going to be three months later, we're here. So why don't you guys just vote on saying, hey, we're going to give you ninety percent or eighty percent or twenty percent, whatever you guys want to do. But for you to restart the process, that, that's what you're doing, and you don't think you are, but you're going to create a monster. Because for me to get back in that portal and do all this other, I had to hire someone to do it. So that's what I'm saying, I appreciate what you're doing, Mr. Sweats is the only person that answers the phone in his office, by the way. I'm going to tell you that, okay? And I do appreciate you too, Mr. McGinley, I really appreciate everybody what they're doing here. But we really need to get it over with, because not only do we need to get over, but imagine the revenue you guys are going to get with the taxes with these businesses coming back in. And the, and, and the people getting employed and stuff. So like I said, instead of waiting till tomorrow to vote on this and vote on that, why don't you just take a little percentage way? But nobody's talking about we need to cut the budget. You guys are creating that yourself, so what's the next problem going to be? Do you understand that? Nobody's saying, hey, we need to cut this down, which I appreciate you doing, but why don't you just say, hey, take this, and that, that's instead of voting on it? Because to get in that portal, you're creating a whole new monster.
Thank you, sir.
I just, I just want to respond with that, if, if the projects are not able to be completed, then they're not going to be eligible, they won't meet the.
Then follow the way they are. Nobody's saying they don't have money.
There were a couple that said they didn't meet as much, that's, that's the reason.
Thank you, anybody else for public comment? Go ahead, sir.
Chuck Mosland, Dallas, instead of doing a dissertation, I just want to plainly ask, will you look in to see if in fact the Land's End Hillside Farms is an eligible organization, wrongly marked as ineligible? I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Miss, go ahead, Ms. Cowan?
I'm just, I'm beat down, but I have to come up and comment again because I just believe passionately in my project, and you know, take a cut, take a cut, well, it's different if you're asking for fifteen million and you're taking a cut, and you're asking for two hundred thousand, you're taking a cut. When my whole project relies on that two hundred and three thousand dollars. And so I just want you to really consider that, and I don't want you to just say, well, then I guess you just can't do your project, because that's not really acceptable either. So I really want you to think with your hearts and your heads on this, and I thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Grantee?
Joe Grantee Plains, first of all, I'd like to send my condolences to Ms. Radel and her family on their loss. The thing I wanted to bring up, and I brought it up before, was Volunteers of America does not deserve a penny. They are an organization that's funded by donations, and right now they are posing as an American organization when they're not. There's five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that can be used by eliminating them from the list and funding these small businesses. Right, if Volunteers of America is worthy, then they can stand on their own, and they're donors. But right now, they have not served the public right.
Thank you, anybody else for public comment? On the Zoom, Mr. McCabe?
All I have to say is you guys have a predefined process for the ARPA funding, and then you deviated from that process to add five to the list to recalculate, you guys should never done that, that's all I got to say. That's like changing the rules of the football game, and, and you guys are wrong, that's all I got to say.
Mr. Raybo?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I just wanted to clarify for the county manager and for council on what Mr. Oskavich said about the redevelopment authority. There was a closing held on January twenty-seventh for a purchase, post-purchase of a former rail line easement in Wilkes-Barre Township. That sale yielded fifty-seven thousand dollars, and that, the money of the proceeds minus the closing costs will be forwarded to Luzerne County as a mortgage payment for the purchase of the rail during the commissioner days. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Also, as somebody who sits on a board that determines LSA money, or actually takes LSA applications, we don't award the grants, the Commonwealth Finance Authority awards the grants. And also, the redevelopment authority just came through with a, and I'm sure Mr. Chairman, you and members of council know, because you went through this with us, the sixteen months of the LSA infrastructure grant, or infrastructure loan program. So if that took sixteen months, okay, for the project list, which you guys can change at any time, just to remind the public, then why can't council take a little bit longer just to make the final determinations and to sort things out? And also with regards to the large projects, in my humble experience, that I've been doing this on the redevelopment authority, why didn't you guys think of, and, and I know one of the council members, I forget who it was, I don't know if it was Councilman Thornton or Leskavich, or, or some, some other council member, but they said from the beginning, why not use for the larger projects, award some money as a match so they can go for other grants or, or loans? I think that would be a plausible scenario in this case, especially with a project that received almost fifteen million dollars from the state. I think that, that should be taken into consideration. But once again, the county residents are screwed, the ones who live on county roads, who didn't receive, that was considered actually a broken promise, because they were told that their county roads would be taken care of, but they weren't. Because of the fact that monies were going to other places. So if you can't give LSA infrastructure loan money for those roads, then I think you should, you guys should give some of the ARPA money, or use that as a match to, for the municipalities to go after, or the county to go after the state ARP money, which by the way, members of the public, that's five billion dollars the state is sitting on of their ARP money. So I think that should be made clear, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, have a good night.
Controller Griffith?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I would like to comment on, you know, we don't always get a lot of good, positive news at these meetings. So to Acting Manager Sweats's point about the state of the county, I appreciate his, his leadership. I appreciate his ability to be open, and his office is always accessible to me when I have questions or concerns. His, his thought that it's one county is absolutely correct. We need to work together, and we try to do that. As a county administration, we try to work together to solve problems. If we bring a problem, Mr. Sweat says, if you bring a problem, bring a solution. That's something we haven't heard very regularly in the county. So kudos for the state of the county report that we got from Mr. Sweats. And the fact that we've increased our credit rating by another point is, is fabulous news. So we need to keep in perspective, you know, the, the, the strong state of the county, the hard work that's being done by some people, and mostly the administration and people who work together to move the county forward, and council as well. You didn't borrow any money. I mean, I always hear on the campaign trail how we've reduced the debt, that's required by the charter, that's, that's correct. But we also have to give credit to council for not wanting to borrow additional funds, which would put us further in debt. And that takes a lottery strength, especially when we're trying to do a budget, and every year we end up with a tax increase or a potential tax increase. So kudos to council for holding the line and not borrowing money, and putting us further in debt when they obviously can with a good credit rating. So you need to stay strong on that, and kudos to council, and kudos to the manager for a state of county report that's, that's positive all the way around. The other, the other comment that I have is to Mr. Knapp's point, the sound system in the council chambers, we need to get more of those microphones. The ability for Mr. McGinley to have to constantly get up and put a microphone up for somebody, I think is just not necessary. I think we need to buy another microphone, or to, if we need to, so everybody has a microphone in front of their stand. And we need to have a sound system that people can speak into. I think it's long overdue, we have the ARPA money, let's use it for something that's good, and move the, move that chamber forward. There's a lot of people that use that chamber, and that, that comes in very handy for a good sound system. And lastly, the issue that I have is, you know, we're worried about having a savings account for council. You know, a hundred and nine thousand dollars, twenty, sixty-five thousand in interest, or interest money that we paid out. There's county residents that have no savings account. We need to stop worrying about a savings account, start giving taxpayers an accurate budget. We all knew this hundred and nine thousand dollars was coming, we should have never raised taxes by two point nine percent. Should put the hundred and nine thousand in the budget and reduce the tax increase, we knew it was coming. That was money that was coming from last year's election. So, you know, let's think about those type of things when we think about budgeting and how we can help the, the residents of the county. Thank you, Mr. Lombardo, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Griffith. Matthew Crone?
Yes, good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I want to thank you all again for your service. I, I know it's tough, long hours, and now you have an extra meeting next week. I want to speak specifically about the ARP money. First, I want to give kudos to Mr. Mitchell for, you know, it's very easy for anybody to complain, it's another thing to come up with a solution, and it starts with research and putting pen to paper. So, you know, my philosophy towards these funds are that all eligible applications should receive something if it's feasible to do so. I heard a lot of thoughtful commentary from everybody on council, so kudos to the rest of you as well. As well as for Ms. Booth, her tone tonight was, you know, very helpful. You know, plans are a very good thing, but if they're found to be flawed during the execution of the process, you can't just blindly stick to them. And I think that there have been plenty of examples given of how the process broke down, despite everybody's good intentions on the front end of things. You know, the list came out, and I think some people got ahead of themselves. I mean, it's, it sounds like there's people that are upset because they're not going to get that full amount of money, and I, I understand that, but put yourself in, in the position of somebody who got no money, an eligible project that received no money. All of us started at zero here, we all put in the same level of effort for the application process. To get something is something, it's not nothing. So I look forward to seeing how this whole process plays out, it definitely has taken longer than anybody would like, and I thank you for your efforts, I'll use my time.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.
Well, I just put it here.